Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting of public hearing on August 31st, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And this is the Municipal Land Use Board meeting. And I'll ask everybody to rise for the... Let's see, I don't think Ryan has done it in a while. Ryan, please.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can read the statement.
Yep, please.
All right. This meeting of the Municipal Land Use Board of the Borough of River Edge is being held in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act and associated regulations. Notice of this meeting was published in the Bergen Record, posted on the front doors of Borough Hall, posted on the Borough's website, and made available for review in the Board Clerk's office. A copy of the agenda for this special meeting was made available for review on the Borough's website near the posting of the meeting notice in the Board Clerk's office. Please silence your cell phones. Please wait to be recognized by the chairperson during the meeting. And when making a public comment, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
I also want to remind the audience that there are three fire exits. There's one in the rear there, one behind us here, and one over here. You're also being tape-recorded and video-recorded by the two cameras up here that are controlled to focus on whoever's speaking. So if you're going to come up and speak, you are going to be on TV. I guess I'd a few ground rules for tonight. Obviously, we have a little early starting date to try to get through these, this application. I'm going to set a time limit at 10:30. However, if I see that things are winding down and the board is starting to deliberate, I might give a little leeway. Otherwise, I'd like to try to get through at 10:30. And because we started early, I'm thinking probably around 9:00 o'clock, we'll take a 10-minute recess for bathroom break or whatever needs to get done, and so forth. So with that said...
It's a roll call?
A roll call, please. That's how I'm getting there.
All right. Mr. Mayor is excused. Mr. Caslin is also excused. Ms. Boland?
Here.
Mr. Merman?
Here.
Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes.
Mr. Cray is absent at the moment, but we'll wait on that. Mr. Ericallian?
Here.
Councilman Canigo is excused. Mr. Gibbons?
Here.
Mr. Esposito is excused. And Mr. Bastid?
Here.
The first order of business is a memorialization for Chen Lau, 910 Willow Avenue, Block 105, Lot 13, to install a 575.25 square-foot patio. I believe that we do have that memorialization.
Yes.
And I was not at that meeting.
Correct.
So I'm going to ask if there are any comments. And if not, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Pfeffer, do I have a second? Ms. Boland?
All right. I'll call the roll for those eligible to vote. Mr. Caslin is absent. Ms. Boland?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes.
Mr. Cray is absent at the moment. And the motion passes. There we go.
Okay. Next up, I think we have minutes, but I don't see them on the agenda, but I have...
They're on the first.
I do have a set of minutes, so let's get those. This is the minutes from August 10th, 2022. Do I have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 10th?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. And I'll just call the roll for those eligible. Ms. Boland?
Yes.
And Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes.
All right. The minutes are approved.
Okay. I want to go to all business. I just want to make sure that... Good evening. Our secretary is here.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Traffic is traffic. We have three people to tell you how to get here quicker tonight.
Sorry.
So attorney for the applicant? Are all the necessary people that you need here?
One is on the way, but will not preclude us from starting.
Okay.
Jungle our intended order a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, are we waiting for anybody on...
I will, Senator.
Okay. Very good. Good evening. This is the applicant for 915 Kindercomack LLC, aka Dunkin' Donuts. It's continued from 7:13:22. This meeting was planned and noticed as a special meeting to the boroughs, so we can concentrate on this particular application for this evening. Anything?
No.
Good to see you, sir.
Same here. Hope everybody is enjoying the final days of summer.
Final day. I will be a grandfather on Wednesday.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You too will count the days...
So my summer's about to end real quick.
Yes. You too will count the days when school starts again.
Tuesday.
Okay. Let's take care of some housekeeping if we can first. My name's Andy Delvecchio, member of the firm of BD Padavano, on behalf of the applicant. We have submitted several additional documents in advance of tonight's hearing that I propose to mark as follows. A-31 is the L-2A response letter dated July 13, 2022. A-32 is the L-2A sign exhibit dated August 11, 2022. And A-33 is the revised site plan and minor subdivisions set prepared by L-2A bearing the last revision date of August 11, 2022. Mr. Vogt, who is on his way, will go over the details of the changes that you will see or may have recognized already in those plans. They were intended to pick up many of the... See if I can pick the right word. Suggestions that were made, including the electrical vehicle charging location, additional landscaping, reducing the lighting in response to your planners' comments in terms of its height. We have even added a fence along the top of the rear retaining wall in hopes of providing yet another measure to control any concerns about sound that may amnite from the site. So you'll hear about all those details. And we added the streetscape improvements to the front as we were suggested to do. So you'll hear about all those details. They're small in nature, but they were important to the board. They were important to us, and we'll have Mr. Vogt go through them when he arrives. In the meantime, I would like to call our traffic expert, Ms. Dolan.
Just before we get to that real quick, this afternoon, I received an email from Liz Stewart, who is our shade tree chair, with some comments on some of the different trees and so forth. Are you aware of this document?
We have received it. I have seen it. Mr. Vogt will tell you, we don't take any real issue with many of the suggestions, the final, what we interpret to be final suggestions that were made in that document.
Then I'm going to ask our attorney to add that into the memorialization and include it as part of the exhibits. Okay. That was a... Well, I just figured I'd get that out of the way now before I forget.
If we can start with having Ms. Dolan sworn.
Who's swearing, man? Yes. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with some background on your experience.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N. Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey. I am a graduate of Rutgers with a degree in civil engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer registered in New Jersey and neighboring states. My license is recently renewed and in good standing. For 36 years now, I've practiced traffic engineering, and I have testified before planning and zoning boards in over 250 municipalities throughout the state. I've also had the benefit of reviewing traffic, parking, and DOT aspects of applications on behalf of planning and zoning boards. I'm a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the American Society of Civil Engineers, and I have testified in neighboring municipalities throughout Bergen County. I've not ever been in River Edge before.
Ms. Dolan, in those times when you've testified in other communities, you've been accepted as an expert in the field of traffic engineering?
Yes, I have.
I would submit Ms. Dolan as an expert in the field of traffic engineering, subject to the board's additional questions, if there are any.
Any questions, folks? Welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Dolan, there were, I believe, two traffic reports that were entered as exhibits during the course of the hearing, the most recent of which was marked as A-13 and bears the last revision date of April 6, 2022, and it appears on Dolan &amp; Dean title page.
June 24?
Oh, I'm sorry. June 24.
Right.
Picked up the second date.
Right. Yes, that is our latest report submitted for this application.
And that report was prepared by you or under your supervision?
Yes.
And I apologize, that was actually marked as A-25. You have visited the neighborhood in which this property is located?
Yes.
Made yourself familiar with the property and the surrounding properties and street network?
Yes, I have.
You've had an opportunity to visit and calculate traffic patterns in the area?
Yes, with regard to the existing Dunkin', specifically.
And you were asked to prepare a traffic impact statement concerning the proposed project, which is now labeled a mixed-use project, having both a Dunkin' Donuts in one property, and a music studio slash school, and bank, and the balance of the property.
That's correct.
And that's what led up to the various versions, leading us to the June 24th last revision date.
That's correct. The June 2022 report reflects the current site plan. That's before the board, which is a mixed-use development.
Okay. If you would start by providing the board, recognizing that we've been through the engineering testimony for a couple of hearings at this point, but if you would provide the board with the relevant, what I'll call, background and backup information concerning the site as it is important to you from a traffic standpoint.
Right. So we first, as discussed, surveyed the existing conditions of the site itself with three driveways, but not generating really much traffic right now, and the surrounding roadway system. We're on County Route 503, Kindercomack Road, 30 miles per hour. Right in front of our site is a New Jersey Transit bus stop. There is not stopping or standing permitted across our site frontage, and parking not permitted directly across the street. Next door, immediately north is, is, or was, an existing Dunkin', which was the subject of the proposed relocation so that drive-through service could be provided. The existing Dunkin' has an ingress driveway off of Kindercomack and then exiting movements to Midland, and that intersection is controlled by a traffic signal.
No, no.
The purpose of the traffic study that was submitted was to review the traffic characteristics of the now-proposed mixed-use development, combined with the existing activity at the Dunkin'. Dunkin', of course, is a coffee business, and those sites are busiest during the weekday morning peak hour, so we did perform counts to identify the volumes associated with the existing Dunkin'. But we also provided, for the purpose of both the county and local site plan applications, traditional trip generation estimates for the Dunkin' and the bank based on recognized trip rates published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So if we didn't have a Dunkin' there to count, we would project about 117 vehicles during the busiest morning peak hour. That would be one hour in the morning that the site would generate its highest volume, and then all other hours, it would be less. So 117 is the projection based on data published by the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. In the evening, much lower, 45 vehicles. That's in and out for a total of 90 trips. And on a midday Saturday, maybe 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, about 100 vehicles entering and exiting a Dunkin'. Banks are pretty quiet. A total of nine driveway movements in the morning peak hour, five in, four out. A little bit busier in the evening, 13 in, 14 out. And again, that's the one busiest hour that's usually coincident with the peak rush hour, somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00, 6:30 in the evening. And then midday Saturday, about 14 vehicles entering and exiting the bank. Now, the Institute of Transportation Engineers doesn't really have music school information, so we estimated trips based on hours of operation and the number of employees and the activity anticipated. And this use would not generate anything during the morning peak hour when the Dunkin' is busiest, and maybe 11 to 12 inbound and outbound movements during the busiest evening peak hour and the afternoon on a weekend, and 11 to 12 entering and exiting vehicles for a total of about 23 or 24 trips during a Saturday peak hour. Now, as I mentioned, the Dunkin' had been operating and existing, and back in January of this year, when school was in session and weather was fair and things were generally back to normal, we counted 51 vehicles visiting Dunkin' during the busiest peak hour and 51 exiting. So that would be 102 versus the 134 that would be estimated using ITE data. Because this is a somewhat quiet site in terms of traffic activity on Kindercomack Road, it's not a highway, these volumes did not surprise me. Usually, if you're on a highway, when there's a couple thousand vehicles passing a site in the morning, you've got more potential volume because people are wanting to get a convenient cup of coffee and breakfast on their way to work, or maybe on their way to school. So the 51 entering and exiting is the real volume that was recorded. And when I said a few minutes ago that the site, the existing bank site, isn't really generating traffic, the one thing I saw when I was there is that people are going to the Dunkin' and using the bank parking lot and driveways, particularly if they want to go south, turn left out of the bank and head south on Kindercomack. So we saw vehicles using the Dunkin' driveways, vehicles using the existing site driveways, and totaling, as I said, during the busiest hour in the morning, 102 driveway movements, 51 in, 51 out. And while the estimates for a new site might be over 100 vehicles entering and exiting, I don't think that we would expect that simply because the Dunkin' relocates and modernizes and provides a drive-through facility. We would expect maybe a slight increase in the 102 movements, but not to the degree, in this case anyway, that ITE might say 134. So that traffic's there. It's existing, or had been existing, because I guess the Dunkin's not operating right now, and that would be simply relocated. We did meet with the county and then had subsequent meetings with the county, and you probably heard about that from Bill Vogt when he testified. And we went through a few different iterations for the driveway design on Kindercomack, which, as I said, is County Route 503, so that approval for the access is with the county in addition to, you know, the requirement here at the local planning board. So we've got separate ingress and egress driveways to accommodate the one-way, counterclockwise design, which is conventional for most uses with a drive-through and even the historic bank use. And we ended up with, as I said, a design that was acceptable to the county. I think we're working through the final submission to the county to address their comments and achieve hopeful approval. They did not require any turning restrictions. For example, sometimes there's a concern that maybe left turns would be problematic. We did not find that to be the case during our observations. In fact, the folks who are using the bank now were able to exit pretty quickly. There's some metering with the traffic signal, and the county did not require any prohibitions or any, for example, gap studies or any further studies. But my presence there and observations during the morning peak indicate that with the Dunkin', even if it were a bit busier than the current Dunkin', that we could process left turn and right turn movements into and out of the site. And as I said, when Dunkin's busiest, the bank will be quiet and the music school won't be generating any traffic. The site design, as I'm sure Bill took you through at the last meeting, creates two separate sites, whereas the bank is currently one site. But the bank is being remodeled to accommodate the two uses and, again, promote that counterclockwise type of circulation. We do have a variance for the parking requirement because the Dunkin' requires, I think it's over 24 or so, and we are providing 13 in this latest design. Oh, it was 40 spaces, based on one per two seats and one per two employees. So a 40-space requirement for Dunkin' with a drive-through is excessive, in my experience. Usually, there's maybe, you know, 10 to 15, depending upon how big the site is and the layout and so forth, but the provision of the drive-through provides de facto parking because people are staying in those queuing lanes and they're waiting to place and then pick up their order, so it reduces the demand, the parking demand, with, once you introduce a drive-through. So 13 seems to be sufficient, based on our experience with these sites and the fact that there's going to be a drive-through provided, because the preference, I think we all know now, in the past few years after COVID, you couldn't go into these buildings, so it created a greater demand for the drive-through, and maybe there's still some people who prefer to use the drive-through. We've got stacking shown for 16 vehicles in this drive-through lane. It is a double drive-through, which I think you heard about from the Dunkin' representative at the last hearing. 16 is a lot more than we typically would have designed for. Prior to COVID, eight was the recommended number of vehicles in a drive-through lane. DOT has had an unwritten preference of 14 spaces in the drive-through. We have 16 shown, and really, you could get another two behind those if the queue were to reach that level. Based on the existing or historic traffic volumes at this site during the busiest morning peak hour, I think we've got a very comfortable design. As I said, this is not a highway location that's generating upwards or over 100 vehicles in the morning peak hour. This is in the neighborhood of 50, 60, even if we got up to 70. I think this is a very comfortable design for the Dunkin'. And there is no parking variance associated with the bank and music school. There's 24 required, and we have 29 proposed. So from a traffic perspective, we're looking at a combination of uses with some trips that have historically been generated by probably a busier bank and the Dunkin', and really the new use to the area would be the music school, which is also a quiet use from a traffic perspective. So overall, the traffic characteristics of this area are not expected to change. The driveways are essentially being reworked to accommodate bank and music school activity, separated from the Dunkin' activity, and both sites have been designed in accordance with recognized design criteria to promote safe and efficient vehicular flow. We've got a sidewalk across the frontage, and we've got the proximity to the bus stops as well, so we've looked to maintain the appropriate connection for the pedestrians in the area as well as the vehicles that are expected to use the site. If this... The only other thing I would say about the Dunkin' trips is that they're typically made as a matter of convenience, and that's why generally you find a lot of right turn movements. But as I said, when I visited the site and performed the counts at the existing Dunkin', I did observe a few vehicles turning left out of the bank and onto Kindercomack. So we won't have a negative impact from this redevelopment, and I think that the traffic levels are manageable. And as I said, we did communicate extensively with the county on this driveway design, and we believe that the driveways will function appropriately for left turn and right turn movements into and out of both pieces of the site, the northern bank and music school, and then the Dunkin' on the southern piece.
Ms. Dolan, the recommendations that were made by the county either have or will be incorporated into the final plans?
Yes.
And has the county expressed any dissatisfaction with either the traffic volumes or the trip generations that are projected from this site?
They have not, and as I said, the information that's been discussed here tonight and submitted in my latest report has been shared with the county as well.
And to your knowledge, has the county expressed any dissatisfaction with any of the proposed turning movements either into or out of the site as it's currently proposed on these plans?
As it's proposed, it's my understanding that the county is comfortable with the design and that all movements would be permitted at the driveways for the respective portions of the mixed-use development.
Now, with regard to the site layout, and specifically as it concerns vehicular access and movements around the site, do you find that the sites have been laid out to meet generally accepted traffic engineering requirements for their proposed layout and movements?
Yes, and in fact, some of the discussion, particularly about the Dunkin' layout, we almost had a mishap where we did not provide sufficient aisle width to back out of the spaces. But that was, again, all worked out with your traffic consultant, Mr. Klein, and the county, and our office, and L-2A, the engineers who prepared this design. So as I said, we're looking to promote the counterclockwise flow at both locations.
Michael. I'm sorry. Michael, you're on this side.
Over here.
Just going to drop to one second, let the record show. It is 7:28, and Mr. Cray is here, and obviously didn't realize it was 7:00.
I apologize.
But you're welcome, and thank you for coming.
It's central time.
I apologize. Please continue.
That's okay. I was just wrapping up, but in answer to Mr. Delvecchio's question, the site has been laid out following recognized design criteria to promote the desired vehicular flow and to maintain the pedestrian connections with the sidewalk system along Kindercomack Road.
I have no additional questions of Ms. Dolan at this point. I do reserve the right to ask some future questions based on comments or questions from the board and the public.
Thank you.
Our traffic engineers, Mr. Klein?
Mm-hmm. Do you want to... Maybe just let's do this question and answer first with her, or do you want to just go right to Mr. Klein?
Whatever you want.
Yeah, let's... Mr. Costa? We'll go to Mr. Klein in a minute. Let's get the board... Let's, well, focus on her, and then we'll go to Mr. Klein.
Well, I think tonight, the board has a traffic expert, I think, so really, it's as...
So we'll go to him?
I would think that makes more sense.
Okay.
As far as the county, everything that Ms. Dolan said is absolutely correct, that the county has looked at this back and forth with Mr. Klein's office, my office, L-2A, their office, and from my understanding, the county is absolutely on board with the location of the driveways and the ingress and egress coming off of Kindercomack. I did not verify that today. I probably should have made a phone call. I did not. But for my last phone calls with Eric Timzak and the county engineers, I believe, this plan will be approved by the county. If it hasn't, you guys haven't gotten my letter to date.
We have to add some signage that they recommended in recent years. That's the final part of our approval process.
But just for the board's edification, for the record, absolutely speaking to them, I believe, wholeheartedly that this will get approved as is.
Is the board okay with hearing from our expert, and then we'll go to questions and answers?
Sure.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a note also, our police chief is here tonight, and he will have an opportunity, as regular board members do, to speak and ask questions.
Do you swear... Mr. Klein, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And just please state your name and your firm for the record again.
Lee, middle initial D, as in Daniel, Klein, K-L-E-I-N, principal of the firm Klein Traffic Consulting, a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, license is current and in good standing. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer. That certification is also in good standing. I've presented, as an applicant's traffic engineer, well over 100 boards, and I've provided technical support to various planning and zoning boards throughout New Jersey, probably about a dozen, under Klein Traffic Consulting. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
Anybody? Thanks, Mr. Klein.
Certainly. So, yeah, it seems like Ms. Dolan got through most of the comments in my letter. I just wanted to ask her a couple of questions about, or a question about, the alignment of the proposed exit driveway and Bloomfield Avenue across the street, and the way the left turns are going to operate. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure, yeah, because that did come up in some of our iterative access design. So right across the street from the Dunkin', where we've got the Dunkin' entrance, is Bloomfield Avenue. And we aligned that entrance opposite Bloomfield Avenue such that if a person is traveling northbound on Kindercomack and they want to turn left into Dunkin', and someone's traveling southbound on Kindercomack and wants to turn into Bloomfield, they won't lock up. We had originally had a design, or one of the designs, where our ingress was shifted to the south, and we could have ended up having opposing left turns sort of lock up and not have sufficient room. So this... So this became the preferred design, recognizing that we needed to keep traffic moving in and out of the side street across the street.
Mr. Klein, I was going to interrupt for a second. Welcome, Mr. Behrens this evening, our borough planner.
Apologies, I had 7:30 on my phone.
For the record, it is 7:32, but we welcome you as well.
Thank you.
Please continue, I'm sorry. It should be the last one.
I think it's Mr. Klein's questions, right?
Right, my turn now, yeah. So just my comment number 14, you touched on it a little bit. You talked about the number of parking spaces that are being proposed and the number of queuing vehicle capacity of the drive-through lane, and it sounded like you sort of added them up to get to the point where we're almost at that 40 or maybe even more than 40. You want to talk a little bit about the difference between, I guess, the parking generation of a coffee shop without a drive-through and a coffee shop with a drive-through?
Right, yeah, because as I said, the ordinance requires 40 parking spaces. We have 13 striped stalls, and then we've got room for at least 16 vehicles within the queuing area. So that's a total of 29. You could get a few more on there, but I think that that's achieving a realistic parking position requirement for a use such as this. As I said in my direct testimony, the demand is usually somewhere in the 10 to 12 range for these types of facilities. And again, this is not a particularly busy corridor. And I think in your letter, Mr. Klein, you talked about the ITE parking generation manual that has trip and, I'm sorry, parking demand estimates for both coffee shops without drive-through and coffee shops with drive-through, and that shows that there is a difference in the demand, a higher demand associated with a site that doesn't have a drive-through versus once a drive-through is provided, you've got that to accommodate, in this case, these days, the majority of the customer demand.
That was really it from my comments. Most of everything has been addressed over the past several hearings.
Okay. I guess at this point, then, I will go to Mr. Behrens. Do you have any questions? I mean, you missed the beginning, but...
We're going to traffic based on the latest plan revisions. I don't have any other traffic questions or operational questions.
I'll go to our board members. Mr. Cray?
I guess, again, I apologize for missing testimony, but I guess the one question I have is, you're kind of at peak time. I understand you're saying 40, you know, spots is typical of a coffee shop with a drive-through, and that this isn't a particularly high-volume area. To me, it seems reasonably high-volume, but I'm thinking at peak time, you know, kind of throughput through the drive-through, you know, with that being a pretty busy area during peak commuting times as it is, and then if you've got that left-hand turn coming in there, if it backs up, it's going to get snarly. And I guess my question is, can you just talk to what you anticipate volume and throughput to be, particularly during those peak traffic?
Sure. I think, did you come in for this at 7:30?
Yeah. I said you may have spoken.
Right, so you did miss the good stuff. I had provided estimates specifically for the Duncan based on industry standards that traffic engineers rely on from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And if we didn't have a Duncan in this area generating traffic historically, these ITE data would indicate we might get about 117 vehicles coming in and going out during the one busiest hour in the morning. But when we kicked off this project, I went and counted what was happening at the existing Duncan at the corner, and I found 51 vehicles entering and 51 exiting. And what I was telling the board earlier is that that makes sense for this setting on a somewhat quieter road compared to a Route 4, Route 17, a highway location which is going to have more traffic passing the Duncan, and that generally means it's going to be a busier site. So while we counted the Duncan and we found 51 in, 51 out in the morning peak hour, that might increase a little bit with the provision of the drive-through with a shiny, nice, new site that's a little bit more maybe inviting. But we wouldn't expect it to get, we wouldn't expect it to double to these ITE numbers. And so the site has been designed, when I say 16 positions in the drive-through plus 13 parking spaces, that's a very, very comfortable design. NJDOT had historically required, although it wasn't officially, but their preference was they wanted 14 vehicles in queue, and the industry standards for traffic engineers was eight. So with COVID, everyone has started focusing on the drive-through and the drive-through spillover from some of these smaller sites. So in this location, we looked at the existing activity at the site on the corner, and we designed based on the newer Duncan prototype with two drive-throughs. So from a traffic engineering perspective, we're not necessarily looking at a great increase in traffic, and we've designed the site appropriately to accommodate queuing and parking maneuvers. And it also, we met with the county to go over this design, and we actually revised it a couple of times.
I guess the only, my comment on that is that existing Dunkin' Donuts is not very accessible. So I mean, I know myself personally. I will opt to go somewhere else rather than go through there because it's a snarl to get in, it's a snarl to get out. So I'm not sure there's a real direct correlation between traffic at the existing one and here, which is, to your point, it's going to be new, it's going to be attractive, it's going to do all sorts of things to draw your eye, and it's going to be much easier for people on Kinderkamak to get in and out of there as opposed to this one. So, you know, I think that the volume may increase more than you're indicating it would.
Sure, yeah, and that's why I gave you the range. You know, the 51 counted up to 117 for a busy highway location. I would hope, and I would think that the operator would hope that the business and activity would increase. I don't know that it would double in this location, but regardless, we've designed for a busy, typical site.
And that 117, the throughput is anticipated that it would not then become...
No, especially now with the double-drive-through, which is a newer, a newer thing to help process the orders faster. And I know you heard at the last meeting from the Duncan corporate representative, and I think she was talking about upwards of 130 cars in an hour. I don't see that as happening at this location. But again, historically, we would have been designing for eight to 10 in queue, and we've got the ability to store 18 on the site before the driveway becomes blocked. So I think that's a very comfortable design.
That's all I've got.
Ms. Bowlen?
No questions.
Yeah, I just had a similar issue with Mr. Cray, or question, I guess. I guess I can just ask, Mr. Klein, do you see an issue with this setup if it does get to that IT number of 117 cars at 9 o'clock on Tuesday?
I think what the expert from Duncan Operations told us is that the capacity of that drive-through, I think alone, is enough to handle the 117. Every 30 seconds, a car comes out, that's 120 cars coming out, not to mention the people that are going to park, come in, get back in their car, and drive away. So I think it's a, it seems to me like a very good design. I've seen other sites that I've reviewed that are a lot tighter, that have more conflicts between the drive-through and the pedestrians and parking spaces and so forth. So I think the fact they've got the perpendicular parking, they've got a 24-foot-wide drive aisle, and then they've got the double-loaded drive-through, that's pretty comfortable. And then they've got the ability to put employee parking in the back and that other parallel spot, so that keeps everybody out, and those spaces don't turn over as often. And if you're driving down the road and you see it's a snarled mess, then you just don't get coffee that day. It's a little self-policing sometimes, too. Nobody wants to get caught in congestion like that. Move on and go to another one.
Okay, because we do have another Dunkin' Donuts in town that does not have a drive-through. I'm not a coffee drinker, I don't go in the morning, but, you know, I would just be concerned that I guess people would then forego that Duncan, go to this one, it's easier, and even forego the one on, in Paramus because it would just be a, so I could almost see us doubling because of it being easier. Like Mr. Cray said, it is, you know, it's not the easiest place to get into now, where it seems to be a lot more accessible now.
Right, right.
Projected.
Right, and I think what Ms. Dolan said was that it's a convenience type of use. If it's not convenient, you just won't go there.
Right.
Or it'll get to a point where it gets too crowded, and it won't operate efficiently, and it kind of backfire on itself. But no, I think, I think it's designed to accommodate up to that 117 number easily. And there were articles prior to these versions of the trip generation that, when you think about it, a convenience use like gasoline, coffee, it's based on the amount of traffic that passes by. That's why they like to be at a busy corner, so they can get traffic from four directions. You want to be on a busy road where you've got a certain amount of volume, and I know that's what they're looking for when they choose sites. So they're looking for a certain mix, and then they're also looking for the radius around them. They want to be, you know, away from another Dunkin'.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Bastid?
Yeah, I guess maybe just building a little bit on the volume, I don't want to kind of beat it into the ground, but I would think the business case for doing this would be you'd want to double, right? Clearly, or maybe not clearly, I would think that the owners wouldn't go through the trouble of relocating to do flat business to what they do. So I would anticipate it's going to be double. So I guess a couple of questions there is, with it being double, will there be enough spaces for all the employees that would be required to have them? My recollection, I may be a little bit off here, is when we had the Dunkin' Donuts corporate expert in here, you know, it was something like seven or eight spots. We're going to need it, be needed for the employees to be able to service the 117 or so people an hour. Is that...
Well, the parking supply that is proposed here is 13, and that's comparable to what's provided at many Duncan facilities. I thought that there was testimony that some of the employees may be local and/or use mass transit. That's typically the case at these types of facilities, that not each employee has a vehicle. That reduces the parking demand. But we have based this parking supply generally consistent with other Duncan sites throughout New Jersey.
Okay, okay. So I guess maybe I'll just ask another direct one then, is will parking be allowed at the bank?
It is not something that the owner has, you know, considered, but if it's something the board wishes us to consider, we obviously have extra spaces from what's required at the bank location. We could consider using those for employees if that's something that, you know, becomes necessary.
Yeah, I would like to request, however you want to handle it, to have it be available to both, whether it be the employee or the patron, to be able to use, to park at the bank. And then just another complication maybe that I'm seeing is that, so if I go on the app and I get in line and I'm in the middle of the queue, how do I resolve it after I've realized that my coffee's ready and the queue's not up to speed?
That's a great question, and I don't know that I can answer. I can tell you that when I did my observations at the existing Duncan, you could tell who was using the app because they would park, they'd run in, and they'd be out before some of the other folks who, you know, so I don't know how Duncan handles that. But obviously, if you're in the queue and you have to get through the queue to do pickup, and the queue's long, well, then maybe you're going to prefer to park in one of those spaces right across the aisle and run in and pick up your order.
That's what I would agree, right? So that's where I think maybe the spaces is starting to get tight there as well, right? Where people are dropping off and running through the app. So, let me just look here. And I'll bring it up just because it was brought up in a previous meeting, I think Mr. Costa had brought this one up, is if it does get all backed up onto the highway, a suggestion was made about a patrolman at the expense of the site owner, whoever the right individual would be, would pick up a patrolman to direct traffic. Is that still something that we would be considering?
I'm not sure it's optional. I mean, if the road is blocked, it's going to generate a patrol response, I would assume. And I mean, it's something that we would...
Right, so I mean, I would think then, would it be something along the lines, and this was the previous discussion, is that the patrolman would be out there at the expense of the owner, right, at the X dollar rate that's being charged, not as just a traffic situation in River Edge, but more of a traffic situation that the business owner would have to address?
I can verify that and get back to you on the break, but I don't really think it's going to be an issue.
And I, just to reiterate, there is a bus stop, and it's also posted no stopping or standing along the frontage.
I guess what I'm envisioning is there's a backup, right? Like, the efficiency of the Dunkin' Donuts people may not be, you know, at the, you know, 95% level, and, you know, they're a little bit slow, and then it starts to back up. And then every morning, we end up with a situation, and, you know, there's a backup. So that's the thing that I'm concerned about.
Got it.
And then maybe dovetailing on that, I'm not clear, when you said with the left turn and the right turn, how that conflict was going to be resolved, because I could see a lot of people trying, you know, there's going to have to be a lot of politeness there with the people turning right to get the people turning left in.
I think it was in response to Mr. Klein's question, right across the street is Bloomfield Avenue, and in one of our designs, we had the entrance to Duncan south of that, and that would have caused left turns into Duncan and left turns into Bloomfield to overlap, and that would have been a conflict. So that's why the entrance to Duncan is generally opposite Bloomfield, so we don't create any conflicts. So if someone wants to turn left into Bloomfield, they won't be blocked by somebody turning left into Duncan.
Okay, but there still will be a conflict of people turning left and right into Duncan should it back up?
Yeah, right. I mean, that's going to happen in any driveway.
So your comment was, just to play it back, your comment was specific to Bloomfield Avenue?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, understood. Got it. Let me just check, I think I have... Yep, okay, good. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pfeffer?
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of my questions were already asked and answered, so I appreciate that. I guess the one thing that I still have as a question is, has there been any taking into account or any formal study of the impact of, for example, snow or flooding on the road as that might affect traffic? I mean, normally, that would affect traffic to some degree, but I'm just wondering if you have any data or analysis as to if we have a snow-covered street, or the snow is piling up and we need street cleaning, street clearing operations, or if there's flooding, which tends to happen more often these days. How, if at all, will that impact on this operation?
Well, I think the tendency is when there's severe storm, there's fewer people out traveling, and so by default, the activity is lower just because the weather is bad. And if the, I mean, if the road is blocked because of snow and you can't get to the site, well, you're going to maybe get down to the highway for your coffee where DOT's been, you know, out plowing overnight or something. But generally, it's another type of self-policing type of thing because if there's foul weather, people are less inclined to go out.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Mr. Meriman?
Yeah. Ms. Dolan? We have a left-turn bay northbound on Kinderkamak. We have a driveway entering the current corner, what was a Duncan.
Right.
We have a driveway and a separate entry, exit, both for the bank, music school property, likewise, the Duncan. We have a couple of side streets coming in, going northbound. With all this traffic and a normal traffic volume on Kinderkamak, do you see any conflicts between all of this in front of this 300, 400-foot area of driveways?
Well, the Duncan is far from the, farthest from the traffic signal, so the interference from the activity at the signal is not going to be interfering with the Duncan driveways. I mean, I sat out there morning peak hour and watched the activity, and so the Duncan entrance and exit are at the southern end of the property, furthest from the signalized intersection. So I don't see that as being a conflict. The bank and music school are lower generators, and so those are lower-volume driveways. I think in the morning, sure, you're going to have some peak activity with the Duncan, 7:30 to 8:30, 7 to 8, up to 9 o'clock, but based on the combination of traffic volumes that we've looked at and looked with the county, we don't, for example, need a left-turn lane at the Duncan driveway. That would be something that the county might want if we were potentially going to obstruct through traffic on Kinderkamak Road. So we did explore some of those types of things with the county, but in terms of... But, in terms of, I think the Dunkin's going to be busy for a couple hours in the morning. But, otherwise, I don't think it's going to be particularly busy at the music school and the bank. And I think that having the Dunkin' furthest from the intersection is, is good because there isn't queuing from the intersection that would obstruct those driveways. And to some other of the points that were made earlier, that existing Dunkin', you can turn in off of Kindercomack, but then you have to exit to Midland. And when we counted the existing Dunkin' activity, we found people wanted to make a left out and they were able to do that without much delay. So, while it is a somewhat busy street, the volumes overall, in combination with the Dunkin' volumes, don't appear to warrant a left-turn lane or indicate that there's going to be a problem in front of that property.
Right now, I don't feel comfortable with all that massive traffic narrowing down, especially with that left-turn bay up there. I guess proof is going to be in the pudding. What do we do if we find we have problems up there as a result of all this activity, especially one that bank opens? Or a similar client, because I'm not worried about the music school. I'm worried about the bank and everything all in the morning. What can we do? Can we come back and somehow restrict a left-hand turn or whatever? Give me, give me some suggestions. Give me, where's my out here?
Sure. Sometimes boards will condition approvals that include a post-opening traffic study, driveway study, to determine if the projections come to reality. Maybe six months after the CO is granted, you can perform a, an actual count to determine whether a left-turn lane or some other treatment or a left-turn prohibition is, is warranted. You can also require that the applicant study the accidents for a certain number of months after a site opens.
Sounds good. Maybe Mr. Klein could address that somehow?
No, that's exactly the suggestion I would have made. And also, I do work for the City of Linden, their Planning and Zoning Board, and the police officer told me that if there's a problem, let's say at a, at a Wawa that's on Route 1 and 9, and there's a problem with a certain turning movement, they can shut that down because it's public safety. So, if there is a problem and it's occurring over and over, police can shut down that movement, put cones all on the double yellow if they have to. We could put in, the city could put in restrictions for left turns if it becomes a problem. But, I, I think the suggestion of a post-opening study is a good one.
Can we ask the chief about that?
We'll get to him.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll get to him several...
Very soon.
Because I have another question.
I promise he's coming up soon.
Okay. Look, he got, he gets...
Marina?
I have one other question. Mr. Klein, you did review your prior comments with the applicant. You had one comment that had been open, and it was your comment number two. You called it a continuing comment regarding the fire truck circulation. Have you heard anything about that?
I don't recall if a template, if an exhibit was presented or not.
Bill Vogt's going to touch on that, I believe.
He will? Okay. Yeah, I don't recall.
I think he may have an exhibit for tonight.
Okay.
Our engineer has a truck turning exhibit and we'll talk to him.
Okay, so when we get to him, we'll, we'll go over that. Okay. I think at this point, that's about all I have.
Marina, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions right now.
Chief Walker, we...
One additional question.
Go ahead. You're interrupting the chief, by the way. I'd be careful when I go to my car.
First I was late, then I interrupted the chief. You know, we're talking about all this, you know, kind of within the framework of a music school and a bank. But, there's no guarantee that that's going to be a music school and a bank in perpetuity. And I guess I'd like your comment, let's assume something happens at the music school and it's replaced with something that's a higher volume. That driveway is obviously much closer to the intersection. And then you're going to have people turning right, adding to that type of traffic flow coming past the Dunkin' Donuts and vice versa. And I guess I just want to hear your thoughts on, you know, right now we're saying the music school is going to be very low-impact, the bank's very low-impact, but we may not always have low-impact businesses there. And we're really, you know, we're really looking at this as, as a whole for, for approval. So, what is increased volume at the other site going to do?
Can I interject just for a second? I believe because of the variances that are going to be issued and so forth, that if there's a change at that bank, they would have to come back for a used variance anyway.
Understood, but we, you know, that's always the situation where then we're already pregnant because...
Am I correct in that assumption?
Mr. Costa?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can only look at the application in front of you. Excuse me. And again, if, if that changes, they need to come back to this board for an approval. And there you could evaluate whatever that use would be in conjunction with the other site.
But, that's always, that's always the, that's always the decision that we're in here is when we're looking at a variance, we're saying, okay, what are we going to allow on this property now and what's the impact, not just today, but, you know, over time? And, you know, we're saying, because we're, we're creating variances for this pro-, for both properties as far as parking goes.
Correct.
So, you know, looking at that in, in total, now, I, I can look and say, okay, it's low volume right now. If it turns into something else, we say, all right, well, we'll review it then. By then, we're pregnant because we have no more space.
Well, and again, that's, that's why I made this, again, if the board does approve it, the suggestion is, you heard the, you heard Atlant, the testimony of the Dunkin' Donuts representative, Atlant, that she worked for McDonald's, she developed a two-way herself, she brought that over to Dunkin', and feels it can do X amount of coffee per second, per minute, per hour, per day, per month, per year. Okay. The Chick-fil-A's, the Sonics many years ago, all the above, where this stuff backs up into the roadway. And that's why I made the suggestion to the board, put your money where your mouth is. If it becomes a nuisance and a problem, then the applicant or the owner of the business has to hire an off-duty police officer to get their act together. It's that simple. If they can't, I don't want to talk about how much money the chief makes and, and the patrolmen and the cars and everything else, but I'm sure that would end very quickly because they couldn't afford it. The other side of the coin is, it's nice to say we're going to put up a left-hand sign if it doesn't work, and this board can do that, but however, you can't. We don't own the roadway, when I say we, the Borough River Edge, it's a county road. So, you're subject, whether you like it or not, you're at the hands of the county. Not to say that you can't somewhat influence the county to make proper decisions, but at the end of the day, it's their jurisdiction on these driveways, it's their jurisdiction what comes in and out of them. And like I said earlier tonight, with all indication, they're going to approve it, and I haven't heard they were going to put any restrictions whatsoever on movements. But again, that phone call can be made tomorrow morning. This board says, we think there should be no left-hand turns coming in. Certainly Mr. Klein, myself, Mr. Burns, possibly one of the, the chairman could contact the county and say, this is what happened last night and we feel very shrugly on us. But again, it's their, it's up to them and it's their jurisdiction. But sometimes they have a very sympathetic ear towards River Edge. I don't know why, but sometimes they do.
I want to thank Chief Walker for coming and joining us tonight. Chief, do you have any comments or questions or concerns?
Sure, just, just a few. I actually appreciate going last...
I'm sorry, could you just give him that microphone there?
About to sing?
Yes.
You're on TV.
Can you hear me now? I assume it's on. I'll talk a little louder in case it's not on. So, you know, I'm familiar with the study, obviously, I think you guys did a good job with it. I think it's very professional. I don't really see any concerns. In addition to that, as, as I listen to everybody's questions, a lot of good questions. I, I always look at it as because I've been here so long, you know, a reality to what is there. And it was mentioned by a couple of people, you know, I'm telling you, if there's, I have the luxury of going to Dunkin' Donuts. I drink, I eat unsweet nice teas. Don't eat the food, I don't eat the donuts. I go there a couple of times a day. I have the luxury of being able to wait online because I'm in town. I get to hear people's complaints about town sometimes, I get to hear, you know, which is good stuff, I don't mind that. But, the point made about the line being long, there's no doubt people are, you know, it's the Northeast, people are not waiting online too long. If you walk into the old Dunkin' Donuts and there's people up to the door, they're going to turn around and walk away. All right? So, I think if you, if you're talking about 16 cars, you may, you may get fooled the first time and go, gee, I wonder how long this is, because you don't realize you're the 17th car. But, the next time, you're not, you're not waiting 17 cars for a cup of coffee. It's just not going to happen. In addition to that, your, your concern about stacking up on Kindercomack, as you pointed out, it's a bus stop, there's no stopping or standing. So, we're, we're going to take care of that, whether or not they call us or not. They're just going to lose business because you can't sit there or stop there. So, that, that would happen. I don't necessarily see it because that's, again, that's a lot of cars stacked up for people to, to be waiting for, for food. You know, there were, we had other concerns or thoughts about the kids. I think, I think it's a good thing for kids. When we know where they are and, and today's technology, there's cameras everywhere, it's, it's a good place for kids to be. High school kids come in at the end of the day. The bank generally is not going to, you know, you're going to get some people there at 8 Dunkin' Donuts time, it's, it's right around there. But, you know, I, I don't think that's going to be too much of an overlay. You're not going to get a ton of people at the bank. I don't see it. I mean, the numbers from their study don't show that you're going to get a, a lot of people at the bank. Are the left turn coming out? The left turns on Kindercomack anywhere are concerning pretty much from, I would say, you know, Route 4 to, you know, Pearl River. Because, because you're addressing, you're running right into traffic. Peak hours, it's going to be more concern. You know, you're going to, again, you'll get people that'll make rights to get out of it, if they get frustrated enough. If it's so concerning though, then we, we could, that's where we would come in and say, hey, no left turns. You know, at the current or the old Dunkin' Donuts that's there, there is no left turn out of Midland. Now, we've had to put cars there, you know, my unmarked cars there every now and then because people, even though there's three signs, they'll try to make that left turn. Legally, the only way out of the old Dunkin' Donuts is to go right in the first lane and go south on Kindercomack. You really can't go to Oriole because it's a solid white line on those two lanes. People do, and we use discretion, we don't want to be that nasty, you know, there, sometimes they'll cut people off, it's concerning, but that, that setup was, was not that good. I don't see concerns with it. I think if there are concerns, we, we can address it. We would certainly jump in. As an example, the Yeshiva, we've had to deal with them with their left turns coming out originally, put an end to that. Then they were shooting straight across because they do, you, you know, flips in, in the middle of town right there, we put an end to that. Then they were going up a block and they were making a left, so we put an end to that. So, you know, we can, I feel confident we can address the concerns that might come out of it. But, I'm, I don't, I don't really see them. I think that, again, by their nature of business, it is a come-and-go business and people want to come and go and they're not, they're not going to wait. I, I just don't see that. In fact, I see the opposite because I get to wait. People had enough and they're just, I order the next one.
Chief, thank you very much. I guess I'm the only one left right now. So, mine is more of a comment than anything else. I'll be honest, in the beginning, when I looked at this...
You talking about the chief?
No, he's done.
Mr. Meriman has a question.
I was going to say, I know, I think Mr. Meriman has a question.
Oh, all right, I'll be quiet. Go ahead.
I have more of an operational question. I watched Sonic open in Hasbro Heights. I watched Krispy Kreme open. I did not witness Chick-fil-A. Obviously, on those other two, there were local police department coverage. I'm sure you're probably going to have the same. Who pays for the town police during those congestions, which usually last, what, maybe a week? Is it the taxpayers or somehow the, gets billed back to, to the applicant, just like your minor utility or something?
You mean because it's new or because that it's ongoing?
No, new.
Grand opening.
Ongoing, you just...
If it's new, yeah, if it's a grand opening, then we're, we're going to talk with the owner and we're going to say, hey, this is a little much, we need to put an officer out there. That's exactly what we would do. I don't, I don't see it being ongoing because legally it can't. They can't have lines on Kindercomack.
Well, you, you already addressed what happens that you'll, you'll take care of on, be ongoing. I was concerned about whether tax, the taxpayer was...
Sure, we would go to the owner and we would say, you have to put an officer there. And if they're generating that much traffic, I think they'll, they'll probably be all right paying for the officer for two hours because that would be quite a bit of traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I apologize. Does anybody else have a question from our chief?
May I speak?
Thank you, you may. I officially grant you.
So, I, I will admit that in the beginning, when I looked at this project, I, I had some trepidations, particularly about traffic. And I've given a lot of thought after reading the traffic studies and everything else. And it goes back to some of the history in the town. And I have a lot of history here. I've been here for the better part of 25 years, sitting up here. I was here for both 7-11s, I was here for Total Wine. We have some really, really popular businesses in town. And these same questions and same concerns came up with all those properties. And to my knowledge, I haven't seen any problems with any of these. We're talking about a Dunkin' Donuts, we're not talking about putting Walmart there or even a, a big Wawa with a gas station. We're talking about a Dunkin' Donuts that, that's only moving from the corner, which is really what I consider a detriment for the town. So, with that in regard, I looked at this traffic study and I listened to what you have to say, I listened to what our professional has to say, and I have to think that this is probably a better alternative than what we had. And I don't think it's going to generate any more traffic than the 7-11s that we have in town and so forth. I think the only one that really causes any issue and it's on a Saturday is Total Wine. And you get a little bit of backup there, but at the end of the day, even that works. If Total Wine works in this town, I can't see how a project like this with, with, with the size of the building and the fact that we have 50 Dunkin' Donuts within five miles of here, is going to really affect traffic and, and give a headache to our chief and our police department. And I think we heard that from Mike just a few minutes ago. So, that, that's my comment more than anything else. And at this point, I will open to the public, correct? Do I have a motion, open to public?
Sue me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? All right, so I'm going to go row by row and I'm going to start with the first row. Your name, sir? Mr. Barrett, please come up, state your name, dress, the record.
Kindercomack Road, River Edge.
And if you want to grab the microphone, you're welcome to, or...
Speak up.
Okay.
How's that?
Well, she's got to be able to hear you, so...
I'll do the best I can. I represent the property owner on the corner of Midland and Kindercomack, By Flowers Corporation. So, Ms. Dolan, you described Kindercomack Road, at least what I hear, as a bucolic country road. Do you know what the traffic count is?
I'm going to object. She never used those words and that's a total mischaracterization. Let's try to keep it...
It's a low-traffic, low-traffic roadway. I believe that was what she said.
Yes, particularly compared to, I believe in my testimony, I said Route 4 and Route 17, which are the highways in the area.
Correct. And what, what kind of traffic volume occurs on Kindercomack Road?
I'm looking for that in my notes. Morning peak hour, a two-way flow of between 15, low 1500s to upwards of 1670. That's a two-way volume on a peak hour.
And, and what is the peak hour, please?
This is from DOT's database and looks like it's 8, 8 to 9 on a weekday, AM.
So, 800... So eight hundred in each direction?
Roughly.
I mean, if it was evenly divided?
Right, right.
And it doesn't show us, though, the volume southbound versus the volume northbound?
So it's a little bit heavier in the southbound direction. There's two days of counts. On the, the lower volume day, it was just under seven hundred northbound and eight forty southbound. On the second day, uh, it was seven oh eight northbound, nine sixty-one southbound.
Okay, and when you did your, uh, study at the Dunkin' Donuts site, was the bank in operation at that point?
No.
And you spoke about people making a left-hand turn from the bank parking lot?
Yes.
Which driveway did they use to make that exit?
Uh, generally, the one closest to the Dunkin' because they were Dunkin' customers that were using the bank parking lot.
So the, the current, uh, or the, the middle driveway of the existing site?
No, the northern driveway. The one that's closest to the Dunkin'.
That's only an entrance?
Well, people...
They were using that as an entrance?
I saw them turn left out of that and also the, the middle driveway. Um, I don't think I saw anyone use the southern driveway.
Okay. And, and those using the northern driveway, there was no problem with that, or?
I didn't observe any problems. As I said, there were times when the queue from the light would, um, come across the site frontage, but it didn't, uh, come to the, the Dunkin' portion of the portion, uh, the southern portion of the site. Um, and as I sat there for an hour and a half, two hours, I saw many opportunities for people to turn left onto Kindercomac from the, the bank site. Um, and so, of course, by, by the time they're at the southern driveway where the new Dunkin' exit is proposed, there was, um, there were ample gaps to accommodate that activity.
In Mr. Klein's report, he did, uh, and I know you spoke about, uh, cars entering Bloomfield or entering the, the site, uh, you know, northbound traffic making a left and, uh, and southbound traffic trying to make a left onto Bloomfield. Uh, he asked a question, though, as to, uh, let me find it here. His item thirteen, uh, and that's the concerns regarding conflicting movements between traffic exiting left onto Kindercomac Road with traffic making a left turn out of Bloomfield. Do you anticipate any issue with that?
No, I think I, I answered someone, uh, one of the board members' questions and I included it in my direct testimony. I believe, and Mr. Klein can confirm, but I believe that this comment, which is in regular text, is from his original January twenty-twenty-two, um, um, review. And I believe that the driveway design has changed since then and that's, that's not an applicable comment because we've aligned the ingress of the Dunkin' with Bloomfield Avenue. So there shouldn't be, uh, an offset that would cause a left turn lockup.
So how, how far then south of Bloomfield is the Dunkin' Donuts exit?
It's, um, well, there's a dimension on the plan that shows fifty-five point two feet from the driveway to roughly the centerline of Bloomfield Avenue.
Okay, so approximately fifty feet, fifty-five feet?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Now, with respect to the music school, did you have an opportunity to gather some information regarding the proposed operation of the music school to determine what their needs might be?
Their, their parking needs?
Yes.
Um, yes, I talked with the applicant regarding the, um, the proposal and my reports as a maximum of five students and three teachers onsite at any one time during peak operating hours.
And the proposed operator is a franchisee?
I don't know.
All right. Because, and, and I, we might have to have her back again? Because the Back to Rock franchisor sent out a card, not for River Edge, but where they have eleven uses that they're talking about. Talking about parties. She specifically said she wasn't gonna have parties. They're talking about group classes, they're talking about camps.
I'm going to object. This is direct testimony unless Mr. Barrett's gonna sit down and put his hand up and talk from factual basis. This is inappropriate for cross-examination.
All right, well, I wanted to know if she had any discussions with the franchisee regarding how the franchise, franchisor requires them to operate. And I think that what we heard from the proposed franchisee is directly contrary to at least the advertisement that was sent out. So I think perhaps if she comes back...
It's an advertisement for another location in another town.
For a franchise, the same franchise.
Doesn't require each franchise location operate the same.
We don't know that. That's what, that's why maybe she should come back so we can determine what requirements the franchisor may have placed upon her to grant her the franchise.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt here. You're showing a, an, an advertisement for a school, whether it's the same type school or so forth, in a different location.
That is correct.
We've already had testimony of what this location is gonna do. I think that's inappropriate and I'm gonna ask you to stop.
We won't, we won't have her come back?
I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna have this board address something that has nothing to do with the location and we've already had testimony from that person. You had ample opportunity to question that person when she was here.
Yes, and she, and she responded.
And she responded and that's her testimony, so we're gonna go by that. If they, if she violates her testimony, then we'll have to deal with it and we'll have a zoning officer go over and pay her a visit. But I don't think this is appropriate, so I'm gonna ask you to stop.
Okay. Do you anticipate any issues with, uh, the ability of someone who gets on the, in the queue and determines that they can't wait? How, how will they exit the site?
Well, they'll, if they're on the outside lane of the queue, they can drive around. If they're on the inside of the queue, um, which there'd be room for four vehicles, um, on the north side of the Dunkin' building, then they would have to wait, um, until someone allows them or they're, or until they have the opportunity to use the bypass lane, um, that's around the, uh, the queue lane.
And there was, uh, testimony that drive-in, drive-through lanes are generally self-policing? Are you familiar with that term?
Uh, yes, and I believe Mr. Klein said that about twenty minutes ago.
So in what respect?
Um, if a person perceives that there's going to be a long wait in a drive-through queue lane, then they may choose to park and walk in or they may choose to visit another site because people typically don't like to wait, uh, in what is perceived to be a long line.
Mm-hmm. All right, I don't think I have any further questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm gonna continue with the first row. Do you have anything to add? Ma'am? Sir? Hello? Second row, anybody? Third row, anybody? We have a fourth row in the back there. That, not seeing any hands, I would like to entertain a motion to close to the public.
Subway.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Mr. Delvecchio, chair, it's back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I'd like to recall Mr. Voege.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got all my stuff.
Um, before we get started, I just, uh, I don't know if, Michael, I don't know if we need you for the rest of the meeting. I don't know if you're, you have a long day. I don't want to keep you if, unless you wanna stay and listen to the engineering part.
I'll stay a little bit longer and then, you know, if you need me, you just give me a call.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Voege, you were previously sworn qualified, remain under oath this evening. I have marked several documents just prior to your arrival. One was the L two A sign exhibit. Another was the updated or revised site plan and subdivision, uh, set. And the third was your L two A response letter, all marked, uh, this evening. Those documents were prepared by you or under your supervision?
Uh, yes, they were.
And let's start, if we can, and talk about the sign exhibit.
Uh, sure. Uh, good evening. Sorry again, I was late. I had it at seven thirty as well. My apologies.
So, Mr. Voege, there was a request made of the Dunkin' operator at the last meeting and also the applicant to attempt to minimize further the signage that is being proposed on-site in terms of some of the ancillary directional signs. Have you made changes to the proposed sign package?
Uh, yes, we have. You want me to have marked signs of it, or...
Again, yes, that is A thirty-two.
Sure, so A thirty-two is sign exhibit EX oh one. Uh, it has a date of eight eleven twenty-two. Basically, what we did is we just made a comprehensive sign plan on one sheet, uh, per the board's request from last hearing. What we did do is, uh, we removed the, uh, pylon sign and two of the directional signs, uh, from the previous hearings that we were here. So we're down to just one directional sign. Um, that is the, uh, drive-through only, uh, in, for the Dunkin' site. So that's when you come in through the northernmost ingress driveway, you have a, um, drive-through sign, directional sign, um, just along the curb line that takes you into the site. All the remainder of the signage remained the same. So we showed the locations of where the wall-mounted signs are. So on the east-facing elevation, so that's facing Kindercomac, you have your walk-up window. Um, and what you have is your, uh, your Dunkin' walk-up text that's above that window. And then along the, uh, east-facing, uh, side of the building, uh, above the, uh, the corner of the building, you have, uh, the Dunkin', uh, text. So that's, that's your sign number one. And then on the north-facing portion of the building, where the entrance is, you have the, the two, uh, capital D signage that's above the doorway. So those are the three building-mounted signage. That's always been there. We're just clarifying the locations and putting out work. All the remaining signage is for the drive-through. So you have your preview board, uh, when you come in, i- into your double stack. Um, then you have your, um, your clearance bar. So it, it tells the cars if you are, you have to be under a certain height in order to get through so it doesn't obstruct the, uh, the pickup and paying operation. Then you have your, uh, order canopy. Basically, that is the small canopy that covers the driver, protects the driver from any weather, also has a speaker and ordering, um, device on that, uh, stanchion post. While you're in that position, you also do have your, um, your ordering menu, uh, on both the inside and outside lanes that are there. Um, and that's, that's basically all the signage that you have for the Dunkin', uh, piece of it.
And with the exception of the first directional sign that says, I think it...
Drive-through?
Uh, I think it says Dunkin' Drive-Thru or D and D Drive-Thru. Uh, the rest of the directional signs have been, uh, removed of any logo or D and D or Dunkin' language on it, correct?
That's correct.
Including the, um, what I'll call the scrape bars for the, uh, height of the vehicles.
That's correct, that's correct. And you can see that, um, you can see that on the, um, on the graphic that's here for, uh, dual bar.
Okay, sorry, I think you were going to continue over to the music school and bank sign.
Sure. Back onto the music, music and bank, uh, we have two directional signs. At the northernmost ingress driveway, there is a enter-only and bank-drive-thru, uh, directional sign as you pull in. And then as you exit, there is a, uh, exit-only directional signage to differentiate the two driveways, uh, for ingress and ingress. And then we don't have any graphics for the wall-mounted signs for the bank and music school, but they, we're testifying that they will be compliant and we're showing a area and location for both of those tenant locations. Uh, that is the same as what we previously testified here. So we're proposing, uh, as a right signage for the, for the wall-mounted, uh, for both tenants. If there's anything that's different than that or if they seek any variances, we'll leave that here before, uh, we move on to the next.
All right, Mr. Voege, let's, uh, switch gears, if we can, to the main site plan set and talk about the updates and the changes and refinements that were made to that drawing. I believe that is a colored version of which sheet because we're gonna have to mark it.
Sure, that's, uh, drawing, you got your three site plan, uh, with, uh, the number five and the eight eleven twenty-two.
As identified, I would propose we mark that as A thirty-four.
Okay, and this is, again, this is just a color rendering of the site plan that was submitted as part of the site, revised site plans. Uh, all we did is added color and we also added the landscaping, uh, just for the purpose of testimony. So based on our last hearing, uh, there were a few items that we needed to add.
Is that microphone on? Because it's not...
Could you just use this one?
Is that better?
Oh, that's good.
Is that working?
Yep.
Okay. So there was a few comments, uh, that we wanted to address on the, uh, from our last hearing. Um, the first one, uh, which I, I would say is more of the major one, was we showed the entire streetscape along the frontage of Kindercomac. So we, um, we worked with your, uh, work planner and engineer and we got the borough standards, uh, for the, um, the curb, the pavers, the sidewalk and the treatments, uh, that are along the frontage here. So you'll see, uh, we addressed all of that and shown that on the plans, um, in the front. The only thing that I didn't, uh, the only thing I did deviate from that is I didn't show any tree wells, uh, in the, uh, paver areas. The entire frontage, uh, based on the driveways that are here, it's encumbered by site triangles that are imposed, uh, both through the county, uh, and through, uh, the Ash Town. If I have the ability to put street trees there in my dealings with the county, um, I certainly would implement them there if, if it's acceptable to them, um, that, that would be an option. But, um, I, I, I'm just stating that if it's an option, I, I will, will put the trees in there to be more compliant with the streetscape. What we did, though, in lieu of providing the additional trees, um, along the frontage within the right-of-way, is we did add landscaping within the subject site, behind the property line, out of all of the site triangles, and we enhanced the entire frontage of both properties on here. Uh, we have been working with the shade tree commission. Uh, we did change the species that they identified along the... they identified along the frontage of the site. We also changed the species of the screening evergreen shrubs that divide the two lots. We also provided additional large shade trees to the rear of the property, behind both of the subject parcels, as well as some understory trees, which are more, I'd say they're more ornamental trees, that are closer just behind the retaining wall to the back, to help enhance that screening for the residential properties that are to the west of us. In addition, we added a solid 42-inch privacy fence, three feet back from the top of the retaining wall, for both added screening as well as fault protection. And that gave us the ability to screen between the fence and the top of the wall, and that three feet of landscaping, and we're going to put some shrubs throughout that area to help enhance that area. So, just to refresh the board's memory, that retaining wall in the back, especially along the back of Dunkin', that measures roughly about four foot three in height at its lowest, and then goes all the way up to almost about 11 feet tall. That's where the trash enclosure is. So, then, on top of that wall, you'll have a 42-inch or three-and-a-half-foot-high fence, and then you'll have dense screening that's going both in front of the fence, as well as back, with the additional trees that were proposed. So, I think we've adequately addressed all the landscaping concerns that were identified in the shade tree commission. There were some additional comments that came out today. I don't see an issue with any of those. There's actually just one comment in there. They wanted to see if we could add some additional medium shade trees within the interior of the parking lot. I think I have maybe three, maybe four locations where I could add some additional trees that are in there, or I can swap out some species that I have in there. So, I don't feel, I feel that I can address the one remaining comment from the shade tree commission. In addition, we did provide the one electric vehicle parking spot, and again, that's the most western, most heading parking lot that we identified at our last hearing. And we also lowered all of the light fixtures from 20 feet height, which is permitted, down to 15. And all of those fixtures are at the 3,000 Kelvin rating, so that's more of a warmer light. By lowering the heights of the poles, I had to add a couple of poles just to get the lighting back up to the borough's standards. But again, it's not, it's not shedding any more light on the property. We played with the intensity of the fixtures to accommodate the lower height. So, that all worked out very well, and it actually, it actually worked out to be, in my opinion, a better design at the 15-foot height. Other than that, that is really the extent of the changes that we've done. They were, for the most part, minor in nature.
And Mr. Vogt, the plans are about to be resubmitted to the county at this point to pick up their final comments?
They are. We've incorporated all of their comments. Our last correspondence with them was prior to our last hearing, where they said that the dual driveway ingress and egress only is acceptable to them, and they had maybe eight or nine additional comments in there, which we've already incorporated into the plans on our previous submission to the board. So, you've seen pretty much more than the county's seen at this point, but we've addressed all of their comments. I am going to go back to them and resubmit to the county for their final review.
Okay.
Those, as you've indicated, those were the highlights and changes made that came out of the testimony you provided at the last meeting and subsequent review letters, correct?
That's correct.
And you've had a chance also to see the review letter issued most recently by Mr. Costa's office?
I have.
Was there anything remaining in that review letter that we either haven't addressed or would agree to address as indicated?
There's a couple of cleanup items I have no problem addressing.
And those could be addressed as part of resolution compliance, if this board were to act favorably?
Absolutely. I'm going to try to touch on all of them before I resubmit to the county.
I have no further questions to Mr. Vogt. Make him available to the board and his professional.
Thank you for your commentary. I'll go to Mr. Barron's.
Sure. Just a few.
You're going to need a microphone, Mike. Tom.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So, as Mr. Vogt testified to, most of the plan revisions were, I would call them relatively minor in nature, in response to board comments and concerns. I do have a few follow-up questions. One has to do with the distance between the retaining wall and the fence, the fall-protection fence behind it. We talked about, you know, the visual impacts, the wall being a maximum 11 feet high and having a fence on top of that and creating a separation. So, I guess my question would be, is the three feet adequate for the proposed planting? And is the three feet measured from the back of the retaining wall to the face of the fence, or the front of the wall?
Oh, sure. I did a, I did a full three foot of green space, so it's from the back of the wall.
Is there a reason that it couldn't be pushed back further, or, I guess, how did you arrive at this design?
So, if that's a segmental block wall, that's an adequate amount of room for me to put a solid fence in there. If I push it any closer to the wall, it starts getting a little dicey.
Right.
Would be overturning. So, the three foot is a comfortable distance. They make a device called a sleeve that can, you know, wide for the force that would go behind the wall. I certainly could push it back a little bit further. I do get a little tight on the southerly property line. You know, I'm down six, seven feet over there, so I didn't want to push it. I also do have a chore row of evergreen arborvitae that are on the adjoining property. So, I didn't want to get too close to that side property line. So, three foot was a good number for me to use, and it gave me enough planting room and yard that I could put that shrub in as well.
All right. So, I mean, that issue is somewhat subjective, so if the board has any opinion about that, you know, you might want to address that. I, it seems like it could work based on the testimony, and again, the height varies, or, excuse me, the wall varies in height from four feet to 11 feet, so it's not all 11 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Would having a taller fence provide additional screening for residents in the back, or is that a non-issue because of the slope?
It's really a non-issue. You have roughly 30 feet of grade change from the back of the asphalt in the parking lot to the residential property.
I'm just going to ask you a favor. Could you grab that mic and bring it over? Obviously, the battery's dead in that thing, and it keeps dying. There you go. Thank you.
No problem.
So, again, there's 30 feet of grade change from the back of the Dunkin' Donuts to the most westernmost residential property. As you go to the bank and music school property, it goes up a few feet. You're closer to 34, 35 feet. So, making the fence any taller really is beyond the 42 inches is a moot point.
Right. Okay. Final comments. You said you would, or the applicant would concede to the conditions in our various memorandums. Just wanted to point out that two of the conditions that I pointed out was that if the board were to find the application favorable, whether or not they wanted to retain jurisdiction over screening, particularly in the rear, so that the residents aren't impacted, so that if the landscaping that's being proposed is insufficient, or if there's some holes that we would have the opportunity to request or require an additional tree, or, you know, within reason, of course. And the same pertaining to lighting, that if there's off-site glare on either side of, you know, up the hill or even across the street to the residents, that that could somehow be addressed. And finally, this is just a comment. I think the issue of street trees is important here because of the length of the site, and I know that there are no overhead wires, I believe, along the sidewalk there, so it actually could be a good spot to have some street trees. So, whether it's on the property or, you know, within the right-of-way, doesn't matter to me personally, but I think we should at least work to get some uniformity there. Right. We're going to get the street trees.
Yeah. No, and I have proposed, I'm trying to save, I'm trying to save as many of the existing street trees that you have.
I understand.
And then, we're supplementing, I have at least four, maybe even more up in the front there to enhance that frontage there.
I would just ask that the borough reserve the right to enhance that aspect of the plan, if we get to that point. That'd be my.
I don't have an issue with it. It's more of, I don't, at this point, I don't want to overcrowd the site.
Right.
You know, so, you're talking about medium to large shade trees, you know, they do, they do need room to grow, so you can't squeeze them together. It just, you know, it just doesn't function.
Mr. Delvecchio, are you acceptable to the conditions that our planner put forward?
Yes, I think we've discussed all but the shade tree word before, and we don't have to continue on that.
So, you'll be okay with that being included in the resolution?
Okay.
Mr. Costa?
Just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to go back to the streetscape. No trees, no lights, just pavers?
I just followed.
Who am I firing tomorrow morning? We gave you the design, because the DOT approved the design.
That's the.
There's lights, there's tree wells, there's trees.
There's tree wells on the, on the design. I didn't see any lights, but I do have the detail that was sent from your office.
Trust me, there's lights. Trust me, there are lights.
I mean, it's not a problem. If there's a revised detail, that can be sent to us.
Mr. Delvecchio, were you, if the approval is based on required to follow the streetscape that our engineer puts forward, are you okay with that?
Yeah. If it's a standard plan that everybody's following.
It's a standard plan, and what everybody else follows in town. So, you're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Anything else?
That's, I mean, I heard the answer, yes.
Really? That's it? Mr. Gray?
No questions.
Ms. Bowlin?
No questions.
I just want to clarify a couple of things, going back to one of our questions earlier about parking in the bank parking lot to get over here. The trees that are on the property line between the two new properties, what kind, are they tall trees? Are they bushes? What is actually on that?
They're evergreen trees. We swapped them from arborvitae to eastern red cedar. It's a little nicer of a tree, and that was through the guidance of your shade tree commission.
I'm more just asking, and my landscaper father would be mad that I don't know the difference between this, but are we talking just a regular tree, or are we talking more of a bush at the ground level? Really, the question I'm asking, are you going to be able to walk between the two properties?
No. Not, these are, these are substantial trees. When they mature and grow, they'll get to 15 to 25 feet in height. They are evergreen.
So, Christmas trees?
Correct.
Essentially. Okay.
Correct. And we have them spaced pretty tight together.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is if it does become an issue with parking on this site, and we have to look at having people park on the other site, whether it be employees or just, you know, customers, would they be able to go through, or are they walking around that entire landscaping and going around?
The way I have it, they're going to be walking around.
Okay.
There wasn't, at the last hearing, there wasn't, I think we got into some testimony about, you know, if someone's going from the bank or the music school over to the Dunkin' Donuts, that they would have to leave the site, go out to the public right-of-way, and go around. We even, I think, provided testimony that we would further separate the sites with a, some type of fence in between, so it would prohibit people walking through the two sites. They would have to go out, and it's also for safety reasons. You know, we want people to go out to the public right-of-way, use the sidewalks, and then traverse into the site, especially if they're using the walk-up window, the bus stop, and the like.
Okay. And I don't know if there's a question for Mr. Barron's. So, we're talking about a, I guess, up to an 11-foot-high retaining wall, then a fence on top of that. Does that require a variance?
This is one of those, depends how you interpret it, part of the code. So, I guess the technical answer would be that the borough permits a maximum fence, and I interpret that to include wall height of six feet. I believe they're already requesting a variance for the wall height in excess of six feet. So, the question would be, how much space is sufficient? I've, I've been allowing essentially a couple of feet for planting purposes whereby, you know, that separation would not create a combined-height situation.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Right. That's why I'm asking, because I know we've had some problems with residents having the big wall and then the big fence.
Right. If it's right on top, I think the answer's clear, that you would include the combined height, but where there's ample space for planting, you know, not two inches, but enough space for reasonable planting, I've tried to be flexible in that regard.
And how much, how much, how many feet are we talking about between there? Was I hearing?
Three was testified.
Correct. I have three foot clear from the back of the wall.
And then, the last question on that is, what is the purpose of that top fence? Is it to keep any sound and noise and light going to the people up on Summit? Or is it safety?
Again, it's more safety-related and additional screening, so it's fall protection and additional screening on top of the fence. But again, there's a 30-foot grade change between the sites there, so.
Kind of why I was asking, if it's that far up to the next property, why is it there? But it's safety and then screening for many.
It's more of, in my opinion, it's more of a safety issue for fall protection than anything else.
That's all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bastide?
No questions.
Sir?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Merman, do we need to take a bathroom break first, or you want to?
No, no.
Go ahead. You can ask questions.
What I do have questions also on your sign drawing, but we're going to finish with this drawing first. I think Mr. Costa picked up the major item, that there are street lights. There are the River Ridge standard lights in the streetscape. That was considerable. Let's start with, I got a question on the 0.02, the bank property. The two handicap spots that you're showing on that are quite removed from the entrance. Is there anything else we could do to get it closer?
We went into that testimony a little bit at the last hearing. The ADA access to the building is to the front of the building. So, being that all the spaces are to the back of the site, there is no rear entrance to either of the tenant spaces from the back. So, the closest accessible route to both of the accessible entrances to the building are on these, on this location to the north. So, we provided that sidewalk that continues to the frontage of the building, and we also continue that sidewalk out to the right-of-way.
Yeah, I see, I see that. And it's almost self-defeating since there's no rear regiments, but I guess we're going to have to live with it. All right. Let's go over to the Dunkin' site. So, we understand that there's going to be a variance now for your retaining wall height.
Mr. Merman?
I'm trying to cut you off. We had an idea since we've discussed.
With the retaining wall. Why don't we tier these walls, just to bring them down in height?
I suggested that a while back.
Good suggestion.
Well, and you're voting members, and they didn't listen to you, Mr. Merman? That's interesting. We're kidding around. You're going to have an 11-foot wall plus a four-foot fence with a little bit of landscaping. Why not terrace the walls and?
I think the rest of the discussion about Mr. Vogt's space, but the rest of the discussion went, we have to put farther into that back area. And the preference was to keep the natural state, natural, rather than disturb a larger area. If you want us to disturb more?
No.
Yeah, we'll still say yes, but that was the discussion. Mr. Vogt?
Yeah. I mean, I am limited on that southerly boundary, and that is the pinch point where I do make that turn around there, so that is the highest point. But anywhere outside of that trash enclosure, I do come back down to a more height.
11-foot wall, these are keystone walls, right? Mortalist walls?
Right now, I have them.
We're not doing reinforced concrete, correct?
I don't have them as that right now.
You have them as?
A segmental block.
Right. Right. If you go up eleven feet, your grid is going back eleven feet, roughly, roughly, um, I might be off by a few inches, if you tier them, you're in the same spot. I hate to break the news to you, but that's.
I mean, that, that's not necessarily, I, I, I don't really agree with that statement, there, there are other types of segmental block walls, we can go with a larger block wall, it doesn't require the grid to go back that far.
Then it's a great.
But on, on normal circumstances, of the wa, whatever the wall height is, the grid usually goes back about seventy percent of the wall height, that's, that's on average for the, for the average keystone block wall, they do make larger, um, uh, segmental block walls that require less reinforcement to go back, the stones are heavier, uh, and it works with the overturning and.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this easy, Mr. Costa, what are you recommending?
It's up to the board, if the board wants to soften the look of it, then you, then you tier, you terrace the walls, if you're gonna use the smaller block, you terrace it, it looks a little nicer, you can plant, you can landscape on both sides, and then you're not falling off an eleven-foot wall.
I mean, we, we are landscaping in front of that wall as well, um, you know, outside of the trash enclosure area, we do provide landscaping, uh, in front of the wall, be, between the wall face and the curb, so it, it, it will obstruct that, that height in those few spots where it does get up in that, you know, upwards of eight to ten feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I don't really see a major difference in the two plans, um, and so, I would suggest that maybe, because this, we could really get into the weeds on this, and get lost in the weeds, I, I would suggest that, um, that there be outside consultation to see if, if with reasonable effort, some accommodation can be made, but if there's no compelling reason to deviate from the plan, and for some reason Duncan determines that it would be cost prohibitive, then we just, um, we allow them to stick to the plan that they have, that would, that would be my recommendation, if there can be an accommodation, let them discuss it, and see if something better can, can be arrived at, but I don't think we need to spend a lot of time hearing just the back and forth about which, which might be better and which might be worse, I, unless there's some compelling reason why one, one version is unacceptable and another version is compelling.
Can I just ask a question on the, the same line, about how much of this wall is more than six feet?
Uh, sure, if, if you go to your grading, if you go to your grading plan, um.
Like, even just show me from this, about this point to about this point, are we talking twenty percent of the property, are we talking eighty percent of the property?
So if you go to the grading plan, I actually wrote where the wall heights are, uh, they're boxed in, so, again, in the back here, uh, to the rear of the property, to the west, I have four point two-five feet, um, on the northern end, and then it's just, just before the, uh, trash enclosure to six foot nine, okay, so.
So we're really talking that corner?
It's really just that corner.
That's gonna be about eleven feet.
When I turn that corner, I jump back down to, uh, just under nine feet, and then it catches grade all the way back down to, uh, I'm just a few feet off.
We're not talking a big portion of it, probably.
No, it's, it's, again, this is the pinch point right here, you have your steep slope coming down, so, look, if I can soften that wall and, and keep it down, you know, drop it even another foot or two, I'll be happy to work with your board professionals and draw that as a, as a field condition.
Yeah, I'd certainly agree with Mr. Fafferty.
It's my recommendation, if they, they try to find that.
Mr. Mermon has the floor right now, so, I wanna give it back, give it back to him. What are your thoughts on that?
Any thoughts? The thoughts are, I have experience designing these walls, girl, I suggested you look earlier at a tiered wall, the final choice is yours, okay, uh, I'm just setting the record that we probably with the exposed face, you're gonna wind up with the single wall that you showed, you're going to require a variance, that's it, okay? How you design that wall, as long it's a segmental block wall, very important, and I think that we have to revise your drawing slightly, because on your details, you deleted the segmental block detail, so there's no place else, even though you've said it verbally, where we say segmental block, so what I'm suggesting is on your C-three, the site plan, will you call our proposed block wall, you wanna look at that?
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
Oh.
You're on the site plan, right?
Sure. I can go back to the rendering.
Okay.
That's fine, it, it just.
Right over there, you say, on your site plan, you say proposed block wall, typical.
Correct.
Please insert the word segmental.
No problem.
Because nowhere else do we refer to a segmental wall.
Okay.
And that, that is very important, I don't want to see a masonry wall up there that's gonna be spray painted and so forth.
Counselor, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a minor change, but it's important.
It's a change.
It's not really a change, it's not our intention.
No, yeah, but it's not re, right.
It's being clarified, so I'm happy with it.
Okay, um, we picked up the streetlights, another minor detail is on your bus shelter, you state relocated bus shelter and trash can, um, which, if you look on the site plan, you'll, you'll see your wording, I'm assuming that we're going to receive a brand-new bus shelter, not just relocated physically, correct? The word relocated refers to position rather than the material?
This came from, this is the county's direction for us to relocate the bus shelter, I can, I can inquire with them on it, whether it's a new shelter or not, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know if I have that answer for this.
The county's gonna tell me I can't get a new bus shelter?
Depends on actually who owns the shelter, it may not even be the county, they may have a lease or a private, uh, deal out with it, I've run across this in another town where it was actually owned by a third party, we had a, we had a deal with a third party.
Mr. Costa, can you weigh in on this?
Trying to think, um, I don't remember if Transit put, provided them, and then we have to maintain them, I'm not a hun, I'd have to get back to the board, I don't want to.
So, can we say that if it is applicable, that you'll be able to replace it with a new bus shelter, that you will do that, and if New Jersey Transit says, no, you have to use the one we gave you, you will do that?
We need to confirm with the county, I'm not sure if it's Transit or the county.
No, I don't, I don't care about that, what I, what I care about is, if you can do it, and there's a possibility, will you do it? If you want to confer with your client during the break, you could do that.
Sure, I'll do it.
There you go, so, that's taken care of.
I'm gonna use my yeses up for the night.
You've, you've lost a lot of mine, too.
Sure.
We had prior discussions about the new location, where we were gonna put a railing or a barrier of some kind, preferably a clear glass barrier or something along.
Or ball, or she had flowers.
No ballots. Idea is for safety, to prevent people coming along the sidewalk from still going up the driveway to the, to, to the, uh, directly to the window.
Do you want it solid?
I don't want, no, ballots are unacceptable.
No, I said solid.
It doesn't have to be solid.
You want like a solid fence or railing or?
I want, I want, we talked about the barrier there, if you recall, to prevent, particularly at the time in the discussion, of the school children still going up the driveway to the window, if we put a barrier there, so, not handrail, but a barrier that they can't climb through, that they now are forced to go around to the window, we believe you were kind of agreed to that in the last, uh, discussion, the reason I bring it up is I don't see any indication of it, nor in detail.
Okay, um, so we did expand that, uh, concrete area in front of the walk-up window, um, I can certainly put a, a decorative railing there, uh, it's not an issue, I, I could, I could put that there, um, and then we can work with, uh, your board professionals on a, on, you know, an adequate ornamental fence that's protective.
And that, that's all.
No issue with that.
Correct, and I believe that was what we had discussed earlier, agreed upon, my whole point is, the drawing doesn't carry forth on that.
That, that, my mistake, and I will, I'll put that in there.
Not, not pointing blame, I'm just trying to get, get what we want, okay, right now, I'm done with the site plan, I wanna go back to your sign, drawing. All right, we have a enter-exit sign for the existing building, the bank music, music property, right now, I don't see an exit, a site exit-enter directional sign for the Dunkin' Donuts development.
Well, we, we did have the monument sign, uh, that was gonna indicate where the entrance driveway is, that's typical of what you see, so, but we removed that, uh, I know that was a sticking point with, with the board, and, uh, so we did remove that monument sign, um, so, and we did reduce the amount of directional signs, we did have a, a welcome and a see you, see you soon directional sign, but I, I believe at the last hearing, that the signage that was presented on the building would be sufficient for the motorists to understand where the property is and.
Okay, I have no problem with that answer, so what we're saying is, right now, you don't think we need one, so forth, they don't have a heard from the county on that, and that you feel that the building itself, the way it's oriented, so forth, will suffice.
That is all the testimony that we've provided here, I, I would be happy to put back more signage on the property, I'm sure the applicant and the, and the owner would love that.
There's one-way signs, there's direct, regular one-way signs proposed, it's just they don't have the welcome back, but they are one-way signs.
I'll, I'll, I'll live with that, all right, I, I can live with that, okay, so right now, there is no entrance or exit sign for Dunkin' Donuts?
There, there isn't, but there's, there's one-way signs for the ingress, and there's do-not-enter signs for the egress, uh, at both properties there.
That's good, now, all right, comment satisfied, but I'm having a little problem rectifying, um, your table sign and the building, I think it's just a matter of, oh, before I get to that point, I still have that problem, but let's get to, you believe you, you show a walk-up sign, you, you, you talk about a walk-up sign in your table, was a wall sign?
Correct.
I don't believe you told me where it's going on the building or the size of it.
I'm gonna switch back.
I think you have the size of it.
I can, I can switch back, I have the architectural plans, I don't remember what exhibit those were, but I'm, I'm happy to remark that.
Obviously, it's gonna be next to the window.
It is. Andy, I have, I have both the, both sites, uh, for planning elevations from JKA, uh, it's revision one dated four-six-twenty-two, I just don't know what the exhibit was.
Bear with me, since I have a later date on it.
It's a one dot zero through a four dot zero.
And what's that for state?
I had, uh, revisions one, board comments, four-six-twenty-two, I think they were the plans that were submitted before our initial hearing in June.
Those were A-four.
Oh, they're one of the architectures.
And there was a revision submitted, made out as relevant to what you're about to put up to at A-fifteen, which was last revised, four-six-twenty-two.
That's it, so I'll, I'll go with A-fifteen.
A-fifteen.
Okay, so A-fifteen, uh, if you go to, uh, the second sheet, A-two-point-zero, so this is the east elevation facing Kinderkamak.
Mm-hmm.
You have your walk-up window, and you have a small awning that's above the window, tucked into the front of that awning is the words, uh, walk-up, and the dimensions of that are on A-four-point-zero, um, it's, it's approximately four foot, three inches in length, and it's eight inches in height.
Okay.
So that area would be two-point-eight-four square feet.
So that's, the word walk-up is gonna be on the awning?
Correct.
All right. So there, there is no classical menus like you would see in front of a restaurant, there's no, there's no other signage at that walk-up window, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, great, question answered.
Right.
Um, let's pull, pull out your sign sheet again, let's, let's go to that table.
Uh, you want me to go to the building plans or?
No, your EX dash oh-one.
Okay, sure. Gotcha.
All right, I'm having a little problem correlating the sign, this table with the building, I think it's just a matter of some of your directionals.
Okay.
Let's look at the first one, we have the first entry walk, walk, wall signs, you have, it says Dunkin', and then it says south elevation, the sign number one, do you really mean the east elevation from what I heard from testimony?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, noted, all right, so you'll correct that, not being picky, I just, there's so many sign numbers and everything floating around here, I wanna make.
No problem, I know there was a discrepancy between the, the two plans.
Don't worry about it, we covered that a long time ago, all right, let's drop down to the next one, with the walk-up, which we just discussed, right, you're, you're, you're indicating it's on the south also, so that's east, obviously, it's on the awning, so that's on the east, so you'll correct that.
Absolutely.
I'm not picking on your drawings, don't, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to get all this signage sorted out in my mind, all right, um, likewise, your sign number, your DD switches, your sign number three, your sign, and the table, I think that east, uh, it says east, and it's shown, I guess, the designation on the north side, which, which is correct.
I'll correct that, I'll correct the direction, no problem.
Good, good, all right, so I think we're all set, what signs are going where, what else did I have? What else did I have on signs? Directionals we got? I think that's it on the signs. We probably finally got that welded down. Unintended, all right.
Is that it?
That's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
I did a quick question before we go to recess. Are there any provisions, or have you thought of any provisions for a bike rack? I know at the old Dunkin' Donuts, the front lawn was spewing with bikes when the kid would come down.
We did. We did implement a bike rack in that, I call that the northeastally corner of the concrete area.
There's three little lines with circles, I think, is what they are.
Just in front of the three picnic tables?
Okay.
Just to the north of that.
Okay.
The three racks.
I didn't see it there, okay.
No problem.
Perfect.
Oh, there it is, okay. I'll bar balance.
All right, so before we open to the public, I think it would be a good time for a recess. A motion to recess for ten minutes.
So moved.
For a second?
All second, eh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? It is nine thirteen now. Will we convene, say, at nine twenty-five? Okay, we're back. It's nine twenty-six. I'm a couple of minutes tardy, but I... So be it. We needed the MetScore. Roll call, please.
Ms. Boland?
Yes.
Mr. Merman?
Here.
Mr. Pfeffer?
Here.
Mr. Cray?
Here.
Mr. Accellian?
Here.
Mr. Gibbons?
Here.
And Mr. Bastid?
Here.
All right, we're all here. Also here, Mr. Barrens, Mr. Costa, and Mr. Klein.
Okay, so we've got to the point of we're missing somebody. You're missing a few people.
Just the audience.
My band call.
Oh, Tom.
Bob, could you go see if you could find Mr. Barrett?
He was downstairs. He was in a huddle. I'm not sure if he's...
We were at the point where we were going to open to the public. So, I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? All right, I'm going to start in the back this time. Anybody have any questions? What they heard, okay. Row there, we have a new lawyer. No questions? So, I can have fun with Mr. Barrett and say, sorry, we closed the meeting to the public already. I apologize, Mr. Barrett, but we closed the meeting to the public already. I hope I... You're up, Mr. Barrett.
I just have a question. They said that you were going to show us a template with a garbage truck.
Sure, it's the same exhibit as the last hearing. I believe these were A twenty-eight from the last hearing.
That's correct.
Basically showed, there's two turning templates. It's the one from the county. They required us to show a passenger vehicle traversing the site at two feet off of the curb line. And then the second one is our largest delivery van to the site. So, it's a twenty-four-foot van that can circulate through the site. It's private waste hauler, as we previously discussed, so we will accommodate a waste vehicle that can accommodate the site.
The last time, as they did it. Yeah, the only other thing that the fire, did the fire department give comments?
I don't have any comments from the fire department, but from my recollection at our last hearing, that the fire truck would not circulate within either of these lots if there is an emergency or a fire at either of the sites, that they would fight the fire from the public right of way. But certainly, emergency ambulance and, you know, smaller-sized vehicles can certainly traverse the site.
Anything else there, Mr. Barrett? Okay, anybody else in the audience have any questions? Please. You have a question?
Comment.
Comment.
So, you have to come up.
Mr. Chairman? I believe the individual seeking to speak is a principal of the corporation represented by Mr. Barrett.
Okay.
Therefore, represented by counsel and should not be having a second say at the microphone. He's represented by counsel.
For a... Sir, you can introduce yourself and make a comment, but make any questions to the engineer at this time.
My name is Saad Isfahaney. I am the owner of Old Dunkin' Donuts.
We grab the microphone so we can hear you. Or have a seat, if you'd like.
You should use the other one.
Use the other microphone.
You can make your objection, Mr. Delvecchio. We'll listen to the comment.
I need to just put the objection on the record. He's indicated that he's the owner of the adjacent property, which he is not. The corporation owns the property, not the individual.
You should have let me finish it.
So, therefore, he's not an interested party.
Thank you for, you can put, you put the objection on the record, thanks.
Should I go ahead?
Could you spell your last name, sir? I'm sorry.
Isfahaney. So, we...
Are you making a comment or are you asking a question?
It will be both. I introduce myself, and then...
All right, so the question I have is, are you going to make a statement or are you going to ask a question? Because if you're going to ask a question, you're going to ask the question. If you're going to make a statement, then you have to be sworn in.
I have a question. My property and ingress to my property, and I have Parkinson's, I shake a little bit, so don't mind.
Sorry about that, sir.
So, between my property and ingress and to the ingress of the bank is only six feet apart. And so, a car length is nineteen feet. And so, every car that makes a right turn on the bank parking lot is blocking my driveway, potentially. So, if there are bank and music store and Dunkin' Donuts employees and customer taking that shortcut, taking that driveway to the bank is blocking my ingress. So, as the traffic increases, we'll be losing people, cars coming in a parking lot. Currently, there are Dunkin' Donuts serve four hundred and twenty-six cars a day. Because I'm the landlord, I get the numbers. I have a sixteen-year record with me to show that four hundred and twenty-six cars come in that parking lot every day.
So, I'm just going to just stop you for a second. You're represented by counsel, is that correct?
I have counsel.
It's yes or no. Are you represented by counsel?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And your counsel brought a traffic expert, correct? That represents you?
Yes.
Okay, so, any issues that you have with traffic should go through your attorney, through your traffic expert? Because you're not a professional traffic expert, and your testimony would not be relevant to this. Am I correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Your testimony here on traffic is not really relevant, because you already have a traffic expert representing you.
But you see my concern.
I understand your concern, and that's something that you should bring to your attorney, who should bring to your traffic expert, who should bring it to us. That would be the appropriate way to do this.
I figure there is no time left, ten thirty today is closing. It's already closing in twenty...
There'll be summations when he'll be able to make a comment if he wants to. But is that why you just wanted to tell us what you just told us?
Well, it's a big deal for us. If we close that building, we have no income coming. We can rent the place.
All right, so I understand that?
We've been there twenty-five years.
So, could the engineer answer the question about the six feet of space between the property line? Is that correct?
It's, we have it stated at nine point seven.
Nine point seven, but the way the aprons come is six feet apart. The driveway aprons, the margin around six feet apart.
And they are existing driveways, so we're just cleaning them up for the streetscape.
Well, if you're increasing the traffic...
Do you have anything else, sir?
Take into consideration that we don't put us out of business. And we've been in town for a long time. We lived there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett, do you want to add anything to your clients?
Well, I think, you know, through our traffic expert, we will do that at the appropriate time.
I think this would probably be the appropriate time. It's open to the public. Your traffic expert's still here?
Right, but we would have him come and testify, Mr. Chairman, after they're finished with their case.
Okay, okay.
We have our traffic expert testify as well as our planner.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Since the topic came up, this may be an appropriate time to put my request on the record through the chair. To the extent any expert testimony is going to be offered through the neighbors, I would request that they be held to the same obligation that we were, which is to pre-submit their reports in advance of their testimonies, so everybody has adequately time to review and consider them.
Mr. Barrett, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't realize at the time that you plan on coming back here with a separate application, so to speak. So, now I understand what the plan is, okay.
Thank you.
They put on their test to...
Okay. I'll tell you later.
Okay.
Okay, and your objection's been noted?
Thank you.
And you're... You want to discuss his request while he made that request, where they have to present the reports ahead of time, is that...
I think it was agreed to by the objectors' counsel.
I'm sorry, you agreed to that?
Right.
That you're going to submit the reports ahead of time?
Traffic report, right. Well, we haven't gotten a planning report. I don't know if one has been prepared.
Are you planning to introduce evidence through your planner during your case?
Well, she's going to testify, yes.
Okay, so then...
She hasn't prepared, she hasn't prepared a report. And all I'm saying is, we have not seen a report from the applicant's planner. So, I don't know if they're going to submit one or not.
No, I don't think we intend to.
All right, so then we wouldn't for our planner, for our traffic expert, yes, but not for the planner.
Okay, so your planner will submit to us ahead of time, like...
No, no, no.
Not the planner, I'm sorry, the traffic expert.
Yes.
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 Okay.
We don't have that.
Yeah, they haven't submitted.
We don't have what?
The traffic. We don't have the traffic.
No. He's going to get us their traffic report. We have his traffic report.
Clarity. We have the applicant's traffic report.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Okay, we have Mr. Barrett's...
The borough traffic report.
Response to that. We do not have the opposition traffic report in hand.
We're going to submit one.
Okay, in a sec. Right now, I don't mean to...
No, please.
Just for, let's keep this clear. This gentleman's up.
Hold on, just tilt the microphone toward Rob, so make sure we get this.
That's okay. That's what you have to keep me on, for sure. Mr. Chairman, they need to finish up, obviously, the civil engineer, the site plan. Then I would imagine Mr. Delvecchio is going to bring up his planner to testify next, I would think. I don't have it in my possession. I don't believe Mr. Barrens, or Mr. Klein, or the board has a planner's report from their planner. Unless I'm wrong, I don't have it. Okay, so there's no submission. But if Mr. Lucio is now going to submit his traffic report, we don't have it in hand. The board, nor us, nor the public.
Right.
So, that would have to be at another meeting. If Mr. Delvecchio agreed to allow that to come into evidence. And again, I don't want to play attorney tonight, but I just want to clarify, we don't have it.
So, I guess this will bounce back to Mr. Delvecchio, what his thoughts on this are, and then we will speak, I'll speak to my counsel, our counsel, and then we'll try to figure this out, so...
I was okay with Mr. Costa's narrative until he used the terms, allow it in evidence. That's a decision to be made at a later time, subject to testimony going in to support it and me seeing what the document is. I need, that document should be submitted at a date prior to the next meeting, I assume at least ten days before the next meeting, because that's very likely when that opportunity will arise. And I am prepared to call my next witness this evening, who, Mr. Costa, again, is correct, who is our planner.
Just an FYI, I believe our next meeting is the fourteenth. And there's only, there's only one application filed for that night, so if you wanted to get in on the fourteenth, we'd have to know tonight.
I would tell you that you should assume we're going to need that, given Mr. Barrett's representation that he will be presenting to witnesses.
I think the problem is that the fourth is Sunday.
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth is a Wednesday.
The fourth is the fourth, which is Sunday.
So, that would be the fifth. Legal holiday converts it to the next business day.
The fifth is a holiday as well.
So, the fourteenth, no good?
No.
Not good for you. So, then the next date we would have would be the twenty-eighth.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Maybe we can take something out of order. Maybe we can take the planning testimony on the fourteenth, since Mr. Klein isn't available on that date, and then do the traffic on the twenty-eighth. That way, we get this done, otherwise, we'll be carrying dates forever.
Right, I mean, I'm hesitant to have another special meeting. The only date for that would be the twenty-first. But both on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, we have a light calendar, so it's just, they should go pretty quickly. And that would give you ample time to come back if those dates work for whoever's here. I'm good.
I'm comfortable with both of those dates, using, you know, Mr. Klein's availability as the cue as to who's going to go on which date.
So, Mr. Klein, the twenty-eighth is good for you? So, we'll put traffic on for the twenty-eighth, and we'll put planning on for the fourteenth, is that correct?
That sounds correct.
Does that sound like it work?
I mean, Mr. Barrett's planner, I'm hoping to get my planner in tonight.
My planner advises that she needs our traffic expert's testimony in order to make her presentation. So, we need Mr. Lucio first in order for her to be able to address the negative criteria.
I assume they know what the traffic, their own traffic expert's going to say, and subject to him testifying at a later date. We're all experienced enough at doing this. We can understand that testimony is supportive.
I am hesitant to move this into an October date at this point. I would say at this point, I think you have to figure it out. Because of, I don't want to just keep postponing this down the road. It's not fair to the applicant that's sitting there. to the applicant that's sitting there, and it's not fair to the members of the board that have to keep coming back for special meetings and so forth. So I would, I would suggest that the fourteenth, we will hear from the planner, and on the twenty-eighth, we will hear from the, uh, traffic. I will allow, however, your planner to testify after that traffic report on the twenty-eighth. Is that fair?
Fine.
I see your planner's not pleased, but.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your consideration.
Trying to work with everybody here.
So with your permission, I'd like to.
And you do.
Call our planner.
At least another forty-five minutes.
I think we're still in public session, are we not?
Uh, yeah, we're going to close that out. Motion to close from the public. Thank you, Mr. Pesser. That's why I keep an attorney to my right, attorney to my left, my only purpose. Do I have a second? All favor? Any, any opposing, abstaining? Okay. All right.
If I could ask for Mr. Hughes to be sworn?
Could you please raise your right hand? You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide some background to the board, please.
My name is Keenan Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal of Phillips Price, which is a planning firm based in Hoboken, and I represent municipalities and private clients throughout the state on planning and zoning matters. I have a master's degree in the field of planning, and I've appeared as an expert in over one hundred municipalities throughout the state.
Do you currently hold a planning license, which remains in good order?
Yes, I do.
Unless the board has additional questions, I'd like to submit Mr. Hughes, as an expert in the field of planning.
Oh, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, you were retained to provide planning services in connection with this application?
Yes, I was.
Were there any preconditions or limitations placed on your services?
No.
You've had an opportunity to review the plans that are currently before the board?
Yes, I have.
And you've attended a number of the hearings in anticipation of testifying this evening?
Yes.
You've also visited the property, which is the subject of the application?
I have.
As well as the neighborhood in which the property sits?
Yes.
You were asked to evaluate the application and the property to determine whether or not variance relief is appropriate?
That is correct.
And I'm going to allow you to, you know, begin your testimony concerning what you did and how you did it. I do want, at the appropriate point, to interrupt you, though, to talk about the call-out of the D-one variance as it relates to the drive-through, given the particularities of this community's ordinance.
Sure. All right, so as part of my scope of work, I've visited the site and the surrounding area. I reviewed the master plan and the zoning ordinance of the borough. I also reviewed all of the correspondence from the board professionals, in addition to all the application materials. Just by way of background, I know the board is very familiar with the site by this point in the application. It's located within the C-one zone. It's, from a land use perspective, located in what I would consider to be a mixed-use area and that we have along the Kinder Comma Corridor, more of a commercial orientation, a mix of a number of different commercial uses. We also have a single-family residential area directly to the west of the site. And so directly to the north is the existing Dunkin' Donuts facility, as well as a multifamily residential building, and then to the south is an existing office building. Mr. Delvecchio, with respect to your specific question, I guess, this site is located within the C-one. The borough has identified the need for a D-one use variance in connection with this application, and that is because of the drive-through facility that's proposed in connection with the Dunkin' Donuts. The music school, the bank, the restaurant itself are all permitted uses. It is just this drive-through aspect which has been identified as, as the need for the D-one variance. In my view, in reviewing the borough zoning ordinance, it's essentially silent with respect to drive-throughs. So in my opinion, drive-throughs do not need to be expressly listed in the ordinance to be permitted. In this case, a drive-through, and this is even more true than it's ever been before, the drive-through is really integral to the principal Dunkin' Donuts use. There's really no delineation between the walk-up window, the in-store sales transactions, or the drive-through facility itself. It's essentially all part of one Dunkin' Donuts facility at this point, which is permitted within the C-one zone. So from a transaction standpoint, really no matter how you look at it, in my view, you could make a case that this is all one integrated principal use which is permitted within the zone. Nonetheless, I, I, I respect the fact the borough has identified a D-one variance here. I do also want to point out, just by way of a bit more context, the borough does have a number of existing drive-through facilities within town. I've identified at least five other drive-throughs. Those would include McDonald's, PNC Bank, Chase Bank, BCB Bank, MNT Bank, and that's in addition to the existing drive-through that exists on the, the, the bank building on this particular site. So all that's to say that, again, the ordinance is essentially ambiguous with respect to the drive-through facility, whether or not it's specifically permitted. I think a case could be made from a planning standpoint that this is integral to the principal use, does not need to be specifically or expressly identified in the ordinance as permitted. Certainly not outright prohibited in the ordinance. So in my view, again, from a planning perspective, I believe that the drive-through aspect of the Dunkin' Donuts is in fact permitted within the C-one zone. Having said that, certainly prepared this evening in light of the fact that there is a D-one variance which has been identified by the borough to provide the necessary criteria to support the application for the D-one variance. So with that.
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. So with respect to the positive criteria, starting with the D-one, focusing really on the drive-through aspect of the proposed use. As the board is probably aware, what, what it needs to find here is that the applicant has demonstrated that there's special reasons in support of the requested variance. So in this case, there's really three aspects to that. One is that the site is particularly suitable for the, the drive-through aspect of the Dunkin' Donuts. Secondly, it advances purposes of the municipal land use law. And then thirdly, I'll also demonstrate how this application, how the granting of the variance for the drive-through to facilitate this Dunkin' Donuts and the overall project is actually going to further the intent of the borough's master plan. So I think it's been well-established by prior testimony that drive-through facilities have become really quite prevalent and in-demand as a result of the pandemic in particular. And certainly since the zoning was originally drafted, drive-throughs have become much more common. And this is something, it's been well-established, in particular by the, the representative from Dunkin' Donuts that testified at the prior hearing. But there's a number of reasons why this site is particularly suitable to accommodate the proposed drive-through facility. So first of all, it must be pointed out, reiterated, that the site already contains a drive-through. The, the existing bank building, there has been a drive-through on this property for a number of years. There's no indication of any significant problems related to that particular facility, albeit attached to a different use. But that is an aspect that, that sort of supports the notion that this site is particularly suitable for the drive-through aspect. Secondly is the size and shape of proposed lot 4.01. So whereas a hundred feet is required in terms of depth in the C-one zone, a hundred and eighty feet is actually proposed here for lot 4.01. Likewise, the size of the slot, ten thousand square feet is required. Over twenty-seven thousand square feet is proposed. So what this means is that the site is sufficiently large to accommodate a drive-through facility with very significant queuing capacity, and you've heard extensive testimony about this. This is above and beyond what's typically required, and it certainly meets and exceeds all the specifications that, that Dunkin' Donuts is looking for in terms of drive-through capacity. It also allows for a buffer to the R-one zone, directly to the rear of this property, of approximately forty-four feet, whereas twenty-seven feet is required. So that's significantly more than what is required for a property of this size. So the size and shape of this property does help mitigate any potential adverse impacts arising from the drive-through facility. Related to that is the topography of the site, and I think this has also been well-documented in our presentation. To the rear of the site, there's a roughly twenty-five to thirty-foot grade difference between our site and the residences to the rear. And so where the site, where the operations of the site, the, the drive-through, the trash enclosure, some of the rear parking area, the circulation area, where that terminates, then begins this extensive buffer area. Not only is that densely vegetated and buffered, but there's also this change in grade. So that is yet another factor that helps to mitigate the potential negative impacts arising from the drive-through facility. And that goes to visual impacts, noise impacts, et cetera. Fourth would be the location of the site along a county arterial roadway. As has been noted by prior testimony, this is a use that really thrives and depends on pass-by traffic. Obviously, this property is next to the existing Dunkin' Donuts facility. It's going to be drawing from basically the same customer base plus some. And it is located on an arterial that is appropriate for this type of pass-by commercial use. And then finally, the fact that very minimal bulk variance relief is required, particularly as it relates to the building itself and its placement on the site, the massing of the building. We're not seeking any bulk relief. We're not seeking any deviations in terms of impervious coverage, or FAR, or building height. I think that fact supports the idea that this site is particularly suitable for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts with the drive-through facility. So overall, I think, from my perspective, based on this analysis, this is an opportunity to relocate the Dunkin' Donuts to an, from an existing, much smaller site with less ability to serve the customer base because of the lack of a drive-through facility and to provide a brand-new upgraded facility on this property. Now I'd like to address how this would also advance certain purposes of the, or goals and objectives of the master plan, which I think is an important consideration for the board. And here I'm referring to a specific section in the master plan that deals with commercial areas. And the first goal is to maintain and upgrade existing commercial areas to provide a complete range of office, retail, and ancillary developments. And a related objective is to improve where necessary the aesthetic character of the existing commercial development by employing zoning controls and encouraging building maintenance. So here we have a vacant, very much underutilized property located on a very prominent key corridor within the borough. This is your commercial area, the Kinder Comma Corridor. And in my opinion, this application would certainly advance that goal of the master plan in terms of maintaining and upgrading existing commercial areas. Likewise, objective two related to that goal is to concentrate future commercial development, office, and retail in the existing commercial areas in order to create a community focal point and minimize conflicting land uses. Again, here, we're, we're promoting, or, excuse me, proposing uses that are permitted within the C-one zone and very much compatible with the character of the Kinder Comma Corridor. So I think that objective would also be furthered. And then a third objective under this goal is to encourage the consolidation of underutilized blocks in the commercial areas in order to provide improved forms of commercial development. And a related policy statement is to where appropriate, the borough should consider opportunities for the assemblage of small lots and redevelopment of substandard obsolete and/or deteriorating properties. And I think in this case, because we have this existing vacant, underutilized property, which includes a very underused surface parking lot located along Kinder Comma Road, by facilitating the subdivision here, the redevelopment of the parking lot, and the upgrade of the existing bank, former bank building, that objective would also be advanced. And then fourth, to assess all proposals for commercial development in reference to market conditions, traffic impacts, and general impacts on community affairs. I think that's exactly what the board has been doing during the course of this application. And I think here, the reference to market conditions in particular is relevant because so much of this application is about providing an upgraded Dunkin' Donuts facility that's really going to meet current demands and current trends within the market, and that's something you heard a lot from the Dunkin' Donuts representative who testified previously. So I think that addresses the positive criteria for the D-one variance. Now I'd just like to address the bulk variances, focusing really on the positive criteria, and then at the end, I'm going to address the negative criteria. But I'm going to go through the bulk variances as listed in Mr. Barron's letter dated July 12th. So he has on page five of that report, and I'm in agreement with this list, but I'll just go through them one by one. The first is the minimum front yard setback. This one is actually not a variance we're seeking. This is an existing nonconformity related to the bank building that exists on this property. This condition is not changing. It's not being exacerbated as part of this application, so this is not a variance request. It's just establishing that this is an existing nonconformity that's not going to change. The next is the minimum number of parking spaces, whereas forty spaces are required, thirteen spaces are provided, which requires variance relief. And as you just heard this evening from Ms. Dolan, and also to some extent from the Dunkin' Donuts representative, the parking that's being provided here is more than adequate, and that is particularly true because of the significant stacking that's available for vehicles within the drive-through queue in combination with the formal surface parking spaces which are striped within the property. So in my opinion, thirteen spaces, based on the testimony that's been provided, will be more than adequate to serve the proposed Dunkin' Donuts facility. And all of these C variances can be justified, by the way, on a C-two basis, and I'll sort of get back to that in my concluding remarks. But we're not seeking hardship justification for any of these particular bulk variances. Now, the minimum parking setback, this is for the northerly parking aisle on lot 4.02, which has an existing setback of zero feet from the side lot line, where a minimum setback of six feet is required. That is proposed to be four feet, or, excuse me, that's going to remain as an existing nonconformity. That's not going to change, that existing setback. With respect to lot 4.01, which is the Dunkin' Donuts lot, we are proposing a minimum side yard setback of four feet, where a minimum setback of six feet is required. However, this is basically the shared lot line between lot 4.01 and 4.02. It's basically internal to the site, and as you've seen in our landscape plan, there's a very extensive landscape buffer that's being proposed between those two lots, between the two parking areas, which will be more than sufficient to, to separate those two lots, and I think meet the intent of that particular requirement. Likewise would be the parking buffer which is required between those two. This is number five in Mr. Barron's report. The northerly parking buffer is an existing nonconformity, again, not changing. And then the, the buffer being provided between 4.01 and 4.02, which is four foot, is, as I said, significant in terms of the, the landscaping that's being provided and certainly meets the intent of, of that buffer provision in the ordinance. Six would be the minimum loading space. We are not providing a formal loading space of fifteen by forty feet for either of the uses. The Dunkin' Donuts, as you heard from the operational testimony, simply does not need a full loading space. So rather than dedicating site area to a loading space that's frankly not needed, it's better to allocate that to landscaping, parking, and other elements. So there's a clear benefit to, to deviating from that requirement. Number seven is the minimum aisle width. So the drive-through lanes on. So the drive-through lanes on Lots 4.01 and 4.02 are less than the minimum required one-way drive aisle width of twelve feet. But we've provided sufficient testimony to indicate that ten feet is adequate for the, for the drive-through on the Dunkin' Donuts. And then on 4.02, this is essentially an existing nonconforming condition, which is not changing. And then the minimum driveway setback from other driveways, which is number eight in Mr. Barron's report. So this is the ingress driveway on Lot 4.02, has an existing nonconforming setback of nine point seven feet from the driveway on adjacent Lot 3, where a minimum setback between driveways of twenty feet is required. This is also an existing nonconformity which is not changing, so we're not requesting that variance. Now, with respect to signs, there's a series of bulk variances that we're requesting mainly related to the proposed Lot 4.01 and the Dunkin' Donuts. So freestanding signs are prohibited within the ordinance. In my opinion, we're not proposing any freestanding signs as that would typically be defined in a zoning ordinance. We're not providing a pole-mounted sign along Kinder Comac Road. What we are proposing are several, what I really consider to be accessory structures related to the drive-through facility, which are being, and as well as directional signs, which have been flagged as freestanding signs. And I guess the point to be made with respect to those signs is that they are very much integral to the drive-through facility use. These are not, we've removed logos from these signs, the overhead bars, for example, in the drive-through lanes. The menu signs clearly are necessary for the drive-through use, so we're not proposing any unnecessary freestanding signs. We've minimized the directional signs that are being requested here to what's really needed to direct people on-site and eliminate logos from there. So I think the proposed sign package with respect to the freestanding signs, as they've been defined by the borough, is perfectly reasonable and also very necessary for the drive-through facility. And I would just further note that, as you heard from the representative from Dunkin' Donuts, the design of the drive-through itself, including what we're calling freestanding signs here, very intentional in terms of their placement, their design, all to enable the efficiency of the drive-through. So there's a clear benefit to, you know, having a site that's going to work in an efficient manner. Those signs are necessary to do that. The wall signs that are being proposed here...
Mr. Hughes, before you jump to the wall signs, can I interrupt for a minute?
Certainly.
I just want to be clear. There is no traditional freestanding sign that's being proposed for this site, correct?
That's correct.
The category of freestanding signs, as we talk about them in the context of this application, really relate to the menu boards, the pre-order boards, and the drive-through directional sign, correct?
That's correct.
So when we talk about freestanding sides in that context, they really relate to the drive-through and its use and the fact that it's being flagged as a D1 variance.
Correct. I would agree.
Would you also consider that these bulk variants, in the context of these signs, would then be subsumed in the grant of any use variance for the actual D1 use?
I would absolutely agree with that, and that's what I was trying to articulate, saying that these are very much integral to the drive-through facility itself, which is the D1 variance that we're seeking. So yes, I would agree.
And if you're going to permit a drive-through, then a menu board and these directional signs, would you say that only aid in the efficiency of those, that accessory use, that drive-through use, but also enhance its safety to ensure that it's used safely?
Yes, safely and efficiently. I mean, this is, as I said, the design of this and the way the, the menu boards and the overhead bars are laid out and oriented is all to enable the efficient operation of the drive-through itself, which has benefits in terms of safety and circulation on-site.
Thank you. Please continue.
Sure. So the next one, and this is number 10 in Mr. Barron's report, is signs on canopies are prohibited. And here, we do have the walk-up sign, which is just a very minimal sign above the walk-up window along the frontage of this building. It will not be illuminated, but it's an important sign just to identify that aspect of the overall use. Number 11 is the maximum number of wall signs. So the ordinance essentially permits one wall sign per establishment. Here, we're proposing three, so that would include the walk-up sign, which again is necessary for the walk-up window, the Duncan sign on the front of the building facing Kinder Comac, and then the relatively small DD sign above the corner entrance door facing the side parking area. So we're proposing three total wall signs. And related to that is the maximum sign area, which is, whereas twenty feet is permitted, we're proposing a total sign area of thirty-seven point five-nine square feet. So while we are proposing three total wall signs, whereas one is permitted, I don't think the deviation that we're seeking is that significant in terms of adding all three of those together. In my opinion, this is a fairly reasonable minimal sign package for this site. We have the DD sign located above the entrance door. We have the Duncan sign along the frontage, which is of course necessary, and located appropriately near the entrance to the facility. And then the walk-up window sign. And that's essentially it for wall signs on the property, very appropriate for this use. And I would note, actually, less visually impactful, I would argue, then, some of the signage on the existing facility, which includes, you know, a cup rendered on the side of the building. We're not proposing any of that as part of this facility. The wall sign location is restricted to the front of the building, whereas, as I noted, we're proposing the DD sign facing the parking area, located above the entrance door, which is reasonable in my view. And then the maximum sign height for the Duncan sign, which is on the frontage of the building, it will have a height of twenty feet, one and a half inches above grade, where a maximum sign mounting height of eighteen feet is permitted. But if you look at the architecture of the building, this is, first of all, it's a minimal deviation, but it's really one that just makes sense in terms of its placement on the front building facade. I think if we could comply, we probably would, but this is clearly beneficial from a visual aesthetic standpoint.
Katie, can we jump back to the wall signs for a minute?
Sure.
I just want to reinforce my understanding of your testimony. There is a wall sign that is on the face of the building that faces Kinder Comac Road, correct?
That's the Duncan sign, yes.
And that Duncan sign, we heard through, I think, testimony of Mr. Voight, provides a notice to the public where the use is and where the driveway is for it to be accessed, correct?
Correct.
In many uses, that sign would also be located proximate to the parking that would be provided for that site in a traditional layout. Would that be correct?
I would agree.
In this instance, the parking is provided, and the entrance for those parking on the site to the building is located to the side of the building.
Yes.
Does the sign that faces that parking area then also serve the purpose of providing notice to guests and visitors or parking on the site where to access the building?
Yes, it does. It's located above the entrance on that side of the building.
And it would also provide, given its placement, notice to the public traveling southbound of Kinder Comac Road, a little advanced notice of the upcoming use.
Yeah, I think that's, that's correct, and I think that's particularly relevant now that we've removed monument sign as well as even Dunkin' Donuts logos on the directional signs along the frontage.
And would you consider providing notice to the motoring public in a southbound direction, enabling them to slow down and access the site to be better or worse from a safety or planning concern?
I think it's, it's clearly better. I mean, it's an example of a variance that would advance purposes A and H of the statute, which is referencing, you know, efficient free flow of traffic as well as the general welfare. I would agree.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay. Finally, is just the variance. This is number 15 in Mr. Barron's report on page five, which is the maximum retaining wall height. I know we had a discussion about this earlier this evening. Six feet is the limitation. As was noted, in the southwesterly corner of the site, there are areas that exceed ten feet, up to eleven feet. You know, my sense is, I think, based on the conversation earlier this evening, we will work with the board and its professionals to find a solution that makes sense. I happen to believe that it's a fairly limited area of the property that exceeds six feet. It's also in the rear corner of the property, which is at least to the adjacent property and is pretty significantly screened by vegetation. And I think with the landscaping that's being provided here, as long as it's an attractive block wall, I don't see any potential for significant detrimental visual impacts as a result of that. But again, I will let the engineers work out that particular issue. But, yes.
Mr. Hughes, the exposed face of that wall in its vertical fashion is exposed, the high side, which is invisible, is the side that faces the neighboring properties, correct?
Correct.
So the exposed wall face is actually internalized to the property itself, subject property?
Yes, absolutely. And it's in the back corner, so it's, I mean, it's in the least divisible location, in my opinion, on the site.
And that back corner is obviously blocked by the placement of the building itself.
That's right, and even the trash enclosure to some extent.
Okay, thank you.
So that is another C variance that we're seeking, and I think, given the topography of the site and the overall design here, I think what we've proposed in terms of the combination of the wall and the landscaping in that area is perfectly reasonable. So just to conclude, the positive criteria, I think, the variances that we're requesting here, both the D1 use variance as well as all the C variances, would advance purposes A and G of the municipal land use law, as well as purpose H, as I referenced earlier. And that's because the general welfare will be advanced by allowing the borough to facilitate the redevelopment of a vacant and underutilized site with a mix of uses that are permitted in the C1 zone, along with the drive-through facility that is responsive to current market demands, but to do so in a manner that, in my opinion, will actually achieve the borough's master plan goals and objectives for its commercial areas. And then just finally, with respect to the negative criteria, the board has heard a lot of testimony from our experts with respect to a number of different aspects of the site design and its operations. And in my opinion, there's really no evidence of any, at this point, substantial detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. From a land use perspective, this is located in the C1 zone. The design of this site mitigates any potential impacts to the adjacent residential area, along with the physical characteristics of the site itself, I think, help mitigate those potential impacts. We've dealt with a number of those issues by enhancing the landscaping that's being proposed here. In terms of traffic, you heard from Ms. Dolan this evening, and I think it's been confirmed by the borough's traffic expert, this use will not have a significant adverse, adverse impact to the surrounding roadway network. And the ingress and egress here has been worked out with the county, the borough's professionals. There's really no evidence of any significant detrimental impacts related to traffic. In terms of noise, this use, just like any other, will be conforming, will have to comply with the State Noise Control Act. And in addition to that, I think the design of the site itself, where we are exceeding the residential buffer, we have the topography to the rear of the site, the block wall, the significant landscaping, and the design of the drive-through facility itself, there will not be any substantial detrimental noise impacts to the surrounding area. And again, if that needs to be confirmed, that we're compliant with the Noise Control Act down the road, I'm sure the applicant is happy to do that. I mean, that's just, it's state law. We have to comply. So there will not be any significant adverse noise impacts on surrounding properties. With respect to light, there have been adjustments to the light design. There's no spillage on adjacent properties. The poles have even been lowered to further mitigate any potential impacts with respect to light. So in terms of spillage and glare, no concerns in that regard. And then finally, just in terms of, I guess, under the category of environmental issues, you know, we're working hard in terms of retaining existing trees as well as enhancing the site with, with new landscaping and trees. This is a very significant landscape plan for both of these proposed lots. And there will also be a new stormwater management system installed on-site, which is a major enhancement to the site. So there's really no indication of any environmental concerns here that are going to impact the surrounding neighborhood in any manner. So no substantial detriment to the public good. And then just with, with respect to the zone plan, I think the board can grant this variance relief without substantially impairing the borough's planning and zoning efforts. As I noted, the ordinance is essentially silent with respected drive-throughs. There are at least five other commercial uses in town with drive-throughs. The drive-throughs existed on this site for a number of years, and they've become obviously more prevalent and desired since the zoning was last updated, and particularly coming out of the pandemic. And to the extent there are any concerns about the impacts of drive-throughs, typically one of the major concerns is, you know, is that going to spill onto the adjacent roadway? And I think we've demonstrated there's significant queuing capacity on-site to accommodate this proposed use, such that it's not going to result in any of those impacts. I've already discussed the master plan detail. It's my opinion that this, granting these variances would actually further various goals and objectives of the master plan. So I think, just in terms of reconciling this under the Medici standard of proof, I think, again, the board can grant this variance. We've demonstrated that this property has characteristics that make it particularly suitable to accommodate the drive-through aspect of the Dunkin' Donuts use. It doesn't need, this doesn't mean it needs to approve a drive-through on every site in town, but this site and this site design that we're proposing addresses every single potential concern, I believe, related to the drive-through aspect of the use, such that I think the board can grant this relief without substantially impairing the zoning ordinance or master plan of the, of the community. So with that, Mr. Delvaki, unless you have anything further, I think that would include my testimony.
At this point, I'm going to reserve the ability to recall Mr. Hughes after we hear any testimony from the ejectors witness, but make him available to the board and his professionals at this time.
I know we're getting close to our curfew, but I would like to get past, I'd like to at least get the dayists taken care of. Mr. Barron's?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've heard a lot of testimony at this point, so I'll just try to reiterate some of the highlights. I do have one question for Mr. Hughes, and this would be, obviously, there are two proposed uses with drive-throughs, one being a bank and one being a Dunkin' Donuts. How would those uses be different than other types of uses that have drive-through facilities? And they could be other types of restaurants that perhaps operate at different hours, pharmacies or otherwise. And, and the question, I guess, relates to impacts in terms of whether these would be more or less impactful to other uses that have drive-through facilities and the board's consideration and deliberation as to whether or not they might approve this.
That's a good question. I mean, you know, look, I think every drive-through is really, depends on the operations of that particular use. I think what's notable here with Dunkin' Donuts in particular is it really peaks in the morning. You know, there, there is that peak couple of hours in the morning. The rest of the day, yeah, there, there's activity, but it's not, you know, it's not heavy activity. So that's, that's certainly an aspect. And then I think just the design and the layout of the overall site is something that, you know, the board obviously has to take into consideration. It's heard a lot of testimony in terms of queuing and things of that nature. But every use has its own impacts in terms of its, of its drive-through facilities, you know, pharmacy or even a bank is going to have different peaks and different impacts as it relates to the operations of that use.
Thank you. So I'm just going to cover a few comments, and one pertains to one of my prior memorandums and specifically on why, and it was my determination as to why the drive-through facilities require D1 use variance relief in the first place. And as And as was mentioned, the ordinance is silent. If you do a search for the term "drive-through," it's nowhere in the ordinance at all. And so how I arrived at this conclusion is that, as was noted, the site is located in the C1 zone, which permits a range of very seemingly specific uses, including the relevant ones would be bakeries, food stores, banks, and personal service stores dealing directly with customers and similar to other listed uses permitted in the zone. So based on that list of permitted uses, I would not state that, that those would definitively include drive-through uses. And further, I think we can differentiate a coffee shop as being a standalone use versus one that requires a drive-through. I would note that there are at least two Dunkin' Donuts in River Edge, or at least, I think one has since closed, but that do not have drive-throughs. There's one in Emerson and Hillsdale that do not have drive-throughs. So I think the use can exist without a drive-through. I understand Mr. Hughes' position that I, I think many of the new ones do include or may include that facility, but it's, it's certainly context-specific, and there are many that exist without it. So I don't think I would state that any proposed coffee shop or Dunkin' Donuts must necessarily have a drive-through. And again, because our ordinance does not permit drive-throughs, which there are a body of, of planning documents. Again, our ordinance is silent, but there are planning resources, such as the Moskowitz Dictionary APA, the American Planning Association, has its own planning dictionary, which specifically highlight fast food restaurants and drive-through uses as being sort of their own separate animal, apart from, let's say, a, a pizzeria with a counter service or even a typical coffee shop without a drive-through. So that's essentially how I arrived at my determination, certainly up to the board, you know, to make that call. Just bear with me while I flip through my notes here. I don't have really many objections from the testimony. I would reiterate what the board's task is here with respect to the statutory criteria for the, first, the D1 use variance. There's a test established by the Medici case, and there's first, the positive criteria, which is that the site is particularly suited for the use. And, you know, what does that mean, particularly suited? It's, it boils down to whether or not the proposed use, it presents a better planning alternative and whether or not the site can accommodate the use. As Mr. Hughes testified to, it's whether or not it advances any of the purposes of the municipal land use law. And there's also the negative criteria, that the granting of the variance relief would not cause any substantial, and this is part of the phrasing, substantial detriment to the public good. And there's an important distinction for D1 use variance relief, that further there's what's called an enhanced burden of proof, and this is different from all other types of C and D variances, that the granting of the variance can't be inconsistent with the purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. So Mr. Hughes testified to that to some extent. I'll offer that there were, there are a few other relevant master plan provisions that the board can consider. Again, a lot of this hinges on traffic, so one master plan objective is to maintain adequate traffic circulation, improve safety, and minimize impacts on traffic on the community. You've heard testimony, you can make that call. I'm not taking a stance either way on that. The second would be that the use, or the use provides adequate off-street parking facilities in all new, excuse me, commercial developments. And finally, the commercial land use plan contained in the master plan is designed to maximize the development potential and utilization of the existing commercial areas by eliminating conflicting land uses within these areas, proposing additional compatible uses, and establishing guidelines to assess development plans. So again, there's the issue of compatibility impacts. I would offer with respect to the negative criteria that I think we all hope that if, again, if this is approved, that there would be no impacts. I'm not sure that it's an impact-free application. Again, if there are impacts, I think they would be in the way of traffic, potentially noise and light, and again, certainly hope that would not be the case. We've talked about certain conditions that might minimize those impacts. So, you know, the board is essentially, you know, tasked with, you know, balancing any perceived detriments that this application might cause versus the, you know, certainly the, the pros, you know, updating the site, providing new uses and aesthetic enhancements to the area. There's obviously, again, the question of traffic, which we've heard testimony at length, and I guess we'll hear, we'll hear more at a certain point, but it seems to come down to the operational component of the use and that there's adequate staffing. So we've heard testimony that this will occur, but I think that's something to consider, that, that in order for the traffic to flow well, for the Dunkin' drive-through to operate well, that it has to be staffed adequately. Again, we've heard testimony about whether or not the site can accommodate the use. There are other uses, I guess I'll pose this question to Mr. Hughes as part of the site suitability test. The question that can be raised is whether or not this is a better planning alternative. I do have the list of uses permitted in the zone, if you want to glance at that. Share that with you? I don't, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I appreciate that. I am familiar with the list of permitted uses in the C1 zone. I mean, I, first of all, I would state that I'm not sure with respect to the D1 use variance that, you know, you don't necessarily need to find that there's a better alternative. You just need to find that we, we satisfy the positive and the negative criteria. Having said that, I would just note, then the C1 zone, a number of commercial uses are permitted, which could be, in fact, maybe even more intensive than this particular use, things like restaurants, catering halls, you know, even active retail uses. I mean, this is the C1 zone, which provides a wide variety of commercial uses. So in my view, you know, this is, as I stated earlier, I think one can make a case that this use is outright permitted, permitted in this zone, even with the drive-through facility. But assuming it's not, and you add the drive-through facility to this permitted restaurant or bakery/coffee shop use, and I think we've demonstrated that the site can accommodate it without any significant substantial detrimental impacts on the surrounding area.
Thank you. And finally, I'll, I'll close my comments with just identifying the number of conditions that I was able to keep track of. One was the issue of providing parking on the adjacent bank lot for the Dunkin' Donuts for employees, if we wanted to explore that. The second was compliance with the borough's streetscape requirements. The third was that the borough would retain jurisdiction over lighting, landscaping, and noise for a certain period if that became an issue. As was discussed tonight, whether or not a post-traffic study would be warranted. Again, I hope we don't get to that point. And that certainly if there are traffic issues, that they have to be dealt with in any variety of ways, that we retain jurisdiction over screening, again, at the time of planting, that the residents in the rear would be protected immediately, not five or 10 years from now, but from day one, as they are now. Mr. Merman had the condition that the, the retaining wall be a segmental block wall, I believe, and, and other comments, and that we also explore the, the possibility of installing a new bus shelter. There may be others, but those are what I've identified. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Costa, do you have anything to add?
The only question I had was, I heard COVID at least five times.
I don't think I said the word COVID.
I think you did, actually.
Just kidding.
What's that? Pandemic? Was it a pandemic or COVID? I think one in one. And the reason for the drive-through is that. I always thought the drive-through is quite frankly because people are lazy and they don't want to get out of their cars. I mean, but I could be wrong on this, and again, that's.
I think that's a huge part of it.
I really do. And I, I think it's the norm that most of these facilities have drive-throughs. The question becomes whether or not this site is suitable for a drive-through. And I think we've talked about, obviously, drainage, streetscape, landscaping, walls. In reality, listening here for, for a couple of meetings already, and I know there's going to be more testimony, but I think it comes down to that specific topic. Not a bank, not a drive-through for a bank, not an existing condition. And I know we talked about the existing conditions, and you went through a list. Whether or not they are variances or not, I don't know if they are or not. I would err on the side of caution that they probably are, unless we have a resolution from a previous board that granted that relief, whether it's an existing condition or not. You might want to consider it a variance, just to clean up the, any, any issues down the road, saying that, that it was never approved by any board. Obviously, it exists because the buildings are there, but again, you can certainly chime in, Madam Attorney, or Mr. Hughes yourself, because I heard you say, we don't need a variance. I'm not sure that's correct.
Yeah, that's a fair point, Mr. Costa. I'll defer to legal counsel on that question.
If I could add a point, I think, you know, if the site were not being subdivided, I think we could understand that position. But once you subdivide the site, I think it's a different situation or ballgame. And to Mr. Costa's point, if there's no prior approval, that would qualify as a pre-existing nonconforming condition. We're going down the rabbit hole here, but I think it's safer to just request those.
I'm just, and the only reason I'm saying that, because I see a young lady to my left, and I have a feeling she's going to say that exact thing. I could be wrong, but that would be it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. It's a little bit past 10:30, but I'd like to get at least a question from the board. Are you guys okay with that?
Fine, absolutely.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Craig.
Yeah, and actually, Tom, if we could get, I just want to get a little clarification. Past practice or precedent here, if, if a use is not prohibited, was the assumption that it was allowed or?
The, the way the New Jersey statute works is that zoning ordinances are permissive because you can't possibly identify all situations where things should be prohibited. So on matters that are silent, it's, you can, it's reasonable to take the position that it's not prohibited.
Okay. And then, you know, obviously, banks were.
It's not permitted, excuse me.
Right. Banks are obviously permitted to use.
Right.
But banks that have drive-throughs, did they have to apply for D1 variances?
That's a good question. I do not believe any of them were approved in recent decades. I was, I was unable to find any records on those, and I think the one non-bank, the McDonald's, as we've heard when they were here years ago, was one of the original McDonald's in the country, so they, they may have some pre-existing element there. I would offer that, that's, the McDonald's in particular is in a different context of the town for, for a number of reasons. But to your point, as, you know, in terms of past precedent, I don't have the answer to that, so we can only move forward based on what we have. I don't know if the applicant, if you've been able to explore that. You obviously would have researched our records, which are lacking, let's say. Yes, so, based on the information at hand, that's.
That's all I've got. I just want to note some of the conditions you noted. Did you talk about the railing at the walk-up?
I, I missed that one. I admit I did not capture all of them, but that is, that is.
I think this application also opens our eyes that we're going to have to send a referral to the mayor and council to address drive-throughs in, in the near future for our master plan. That's a discussion for another day. I'll pass it on to Chairman Castleman to deal with. Ms. Bollan?
No, no questions.
Brian?
I'm good.
Colin?
All right, no question.
Nothing.
No, I'm still on the listening stage. I have no questions at this point. Unbelievable.
Well, that works out well. All right, so I'm going to, let me ask you, if you have a cross, is it going to be, do your cross-examine going to take a while today? Do you want to wait till the next meeting? Or do you want to?
Can we prefer to wait, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so I'm going to open up to the public with the exception of the objector to see if there's anybody from the public that would like to ask questions while we're here. Can I have a second? Can I have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? So anybody from the public other than the objectors? Would you like to, anybody want to make a statement? Okay, so that works well. I'll entertain a motion to close to the public. Second? Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask Marina to carry this application to Wednesday, September 14th, at 7:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I think I might have a conflict with September 14th. I didn't realize it before, so.
All right.
There's a very real, very real chance I won't be here.
All right, so then you just watch the video, and then you can sign the certification that you watched it.
Yeah, just want to make sure that it's aware that I likely will not be here.
Mr. Chairman? Do they have to say anything on carrying this to the next meeting?
Mr. Delvecchio, would you consent to carry, to extend the time for the board to act to the September 14th meeting?
Yes. Any more comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just.
Yes, sir.
Just so we know, Mr. Klein is not here on the 14th. I also, I'm not available on the 14th.
All right, so I think we're just going to hear from your planner on the 14th, correct?
The planner is going to be on the 14th, correct?
We would prefer not to. We, as we said before, we prefer to have our traffic expert first. Why don't we do it all on the 28th?
Well, we have an application pending on the 28th, and we have to get regular borough applications through here. So that's why I'm trying to utilize the 14th as well. Give me some help here, Mr. Delvecchio.
I thought we've discussed this issue, resolved it. I hate talking about things twice.
Yeah, I, so I'm going to let your planner discuss what this, what the planner said on the 14th, and then your traffic expert can come back on the 28th, and, and then she can question, go from there with the traffic expert. Is that, is that okay with you? That's what we originally agreed to. I know her coming back twice is probably not great, but I want to get this off the calendar.
I understand, but it would seem to me it'd be more efficient to do it all in one evening, rather than just come back for.
We all get it done in one evening, let's be frank. We have closing statements to do, we got two witnesses and a cross-examination.
I mean, I was hoping that we would get a little further on tonight. We didn't. And I'm hesitant to keep having special meetings because everybody has a life. So I'm, I'm going to go with what I said, and then we're going to have to just deal with that down the road. All right? Any other comments from the board? You're good?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Go to second? All in favor? Folks, I want to thank you for the little extra time tonight. You get perspective, at least for half of it.